Welcome West Orange to our Tuesday, April 28, 2020 Township Council Meeting. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokowiak?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Casalino?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and again, welcome, West Orange. Sorry we're late to our online meeting. I'd like to introduce Laura Grafftisa. For those of you who were not with us at the last meeting, she is our moderator. She's from our school district, and we thank her for moderating our meeting for us. And you have access to her, and she will, when it comes time to public comment, she will introduce you into our meeting. So we hope everything goes smooth this evening, and I hope you all have some patience with us. I'd like to start off the meeting, and I hope this isn't going to continue, but since the last meeting, we lost over another 50 residents in the township. And so I'd like to start off the meeting with saying, having a moment of silence, thinking of all their families, them, and so many of the sick and suffering still in our township. So if we could please bow our heads for a minute. Thank you. It's been a tough couple of weeks for us here in the township, and we wanted to bring to you tonight some important information. We feel it's important. We know a lot of you are stuck at home. Some of you, many of you, are not on the internet, so this will appear on TV 3645 if you have FiOS. And we just want to give you some good information to help you navigate through these tough times. Last time, we had Assemblyman John McKing on, and he was very helpful, and so I have posted tonight his information. So for those who are still having problems seeking unemployment and need some assistance, please feel free to reach out to his office. He is there to help. And also, if you're having issues, if you're a business owner and you're trying to get a small business loan, and you're having issues on that, with that, please feel free to go to the website or call our Assemblyman's phone number for assistance, because we know these are tough times, and to navigate, we know the website this week has been jammed up. But we're here to assist you. I know also, our Downtown Director, Megan Brill, has reached out to many of our businesses in the community, and again, we're here to assist. So anything we could do for you, please let us know, and reach out to these other sites. And tonight, we have some, we have a few guests this evening to help us assist with information. Before they get started, I just want to put up here on the site, we have information for COVID. Sometimes it's hard to get through to the Health Department. Someone's not always there on the phone, but you could leave a message, but we have the website that you could reach out to that's on the screen. We have the medical COVID hotline numbers. So again, please reach out. We have the information here, and we want you to be able to get all your questions answered. And at any given time, if you call one of us, we're on www.westorangecouncil@westorange.org, and please reach out to us at any given time. Next, I would like to introduce our Police Chief and Operations Director, Chief Abbott, and he's going to give us an update. We've had some fortunate, some scams have been going on in the community. Unfortunately, when we have times of need, there's always folks out there that are bad actors who want to take advantage of situations and advantage of the public. And Chief is going to give us some important updates. So Chief Abbott, thank you for coming on tonight, and we hope you're doing well.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Before I jump into that, I just want to put a plug in for, I understand Millennium Strategies is up for renewal tonight, and of all the different vendors that I've dealt with that relates to grant writing, they've really been head and shoulders above everybody else. They didn't ask for that plug, but seeing it on there, I just felt compelled to get in there. So for the purposes of tonight, there's a couple of social media posts we have out, and we're also running it on TV 3645. We call it our lock it or lose it campaign. Please remember that most of the vehicles that are burglarized in West Orange and everywhere else in the country, for that matter, are left unlocked, and there's valuables located in the vehicle. So somebody looks in the window, they see a laptop, or a handbag, or whatever, car's not locked, it's an easy target. Probably have a better chance of hitting the lottery than catching a crime like that in progress. That's the first thing that residents ask for is, well, can we get more patrols in the area? It's not unique to any certain area of town, it's all over town when it happens. And fortunately, it hasn't been that bad, although that's one of the expected spikes, and it's one of the ongoing spikes around the state. So it's one of the ones we're anticipating, but it hasn't been too bad. We have made a couple of arrests, we actually made one tonight along with South Orange Police down on the borderline. So kudos to South Orange PD for following somebody that they recognized to be an habitual burglar of motor vehicles and making that arrest. It was Detective Hunt and Lieutenant Brian McGuire over there in South Orange PD. If any listeners know those gentlemen, I personally thank them. Second issue is, the clerk is not issuing any peddler's licenses in township right now. So if anybody knocks at your door trying to peddle anything, please dial the non-emergency number 973-254000. If you are more scared or you think it's any type of emergency, please dial 911. Last thing is the scams that are going on. So between text messaging, emails, and social media, there's a number of phishing scams. My quote for that, and for everybody that's listening, is don't click the link. You may be told that someone you've been in contact with has tested positive, they want you to click the link, don't do it. It may say you have the ability to claim your stimulus check from the IRS, don't click the link. There may be disinformation about self-diagnosis protocols and breathing exercises, fake cures and tests. Again, don't click the link. The United States Postal Service has some concerns with general thefts of mail, forced entries into cluster box units such as in apartment buildings where the mailboxes are altogether, and they're concerned about fraudulent change of address and the whole mail activity. So if you see anything like that, you're not getting your mail for some reason, please reach out to the United States Post Office right away. Be careful of, people are working from home, they're out of work, they may see applying for jobs online, work from the security and safety of your own home. Most of these are scams. There may be games that ask for a number of questions that ask what year you graduated high school, you know, different things like that, that are typical security questions to your bank accounts and things. Don't supply any of that. Never pay fees upfront for any services, for employment, for anything. There's a lot of romance scams going on right now. People are locked away, they haven't been out on a date, they're a little bit lonely, very easy to get tricked into. A lot of fake PPE, personal protection equipment scams going on about buying masks, different things like that. You really have to be careful, and you know, that's our new saying, don't click the link. So that's about all I have. I just ask everybody to be very cautious, always please, please, please call us. Too many times over the years, I've been told I didn't want to bother you, I knew how busy you were, so I didn't call. That's why we're there for, please call us, 32973-325-4000, non-emergency, 911 in emergency. We're more than happy to take your call, and we will assist you. I wish everybody continued health, and the deepest condolences for those of you who've lost friends and loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you're left on mute.
I thought I muted myself.
No, no, you're good.
And at the end of all our guests, after they speak, I'm going to circle on back, and if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for all our guest speakers today. So first, I just want to get through each guest. And next up, also I neglected to mention, Chief Abbott is a member of our Emergency Management Team for this crisis. He's on the COVID team, so is our Fire Chief, Anthony Vecchio. And Chief Vecchio, we welcome you here this evening. We appreciate you coming in. You're going to give us a little information about our fire department this evening, and we appreciate all the hours you have been putting in lately as well. So Chief Vecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I did prepare a little something. Thank you, Council President, and to the council members for inviting me tonight. Since I know you've asked me to come and answer some questions, I thought I'd give a brief overview of where the fire department currently stands during the COVID-19 crisis. Hopefully, this can satisfy some, if not all, of those questions. The COVID-19 scenario is the largest scale communicable disease event that we've ever seen. However, the fire department has taken somewhat the same preventative approach responding to this pandemic as we would with influenza or any other viral disease, but obviously with a different level of vigilance. Given the many early unknowns regarding the transmission of the virus and length of time it lives on surfaces, our use of personal protective equipment has increased, and the level to which we decontaminate our ambulances and fire vehicles has also, excuse me, been modified. Early in the crisis, we had some difficulty with procurement of PPE and decontamination supplies. However, with the help of the West Orange OEM and the county OEM, as well as many of our committed vendors, we're currently stocked to keep us protected for at least the next month. Our call volume has fluctuated over the past six to seven weeks. We've seen it uptick, obviously, in EMS responses. About three weeks ago, it started. We staffed an extra ambulance to compensate for the additional calls. The COVID responses and transports tend to take longer overall, and we were beginning to see the stacking of calls, which is something we never want to do, where people are actually waiting for service. The additional ambulance helped to alleviate that issue. As predicted, many, approximately 175 of our EMS responses since March 1st have been to the 11 private long-term care facilities in town. Internally, the fire department's not gone unscathed by the virus. At our most challenging time, the department had 23 of our members out. The majority of these members were either positive for COVID-19, symptomatic of the virus, or isolated due to an exposure. Thankfully, most of those members have returned to full duty. However, we do still have several out. In total, we've had seven who have tested positive, and well over 20 or so who are either symptomatic or had to be put off duty for self-isolation due to an exposure. As they did several weeks ago, I'd like to offer the community some recommendations regarding the COVID-19 event. Since most people have been overwhelmed with information on this virus, we continue to recommend the following information, we continue to recommend following the information distributed only by the Centers for Disease Control, the New Jersey Department of Health, and the West Orange Health Department. Too much inaccurate information circulates through social media, and I encourage everyone to vet your sources. Also, if you or anyone in your family circle believes that they are symptomatic, as defined by the CDC, we ask that you contact your personal physicians first for direction. If you believe your symptoms require being treated at a hospital, we ask that only patients who are non-ambulatory, meaning they can't walk, and without a means of transport, call 911. The overall goal here is to limit the exposure of the virus to others, and that includes our emergency responders. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I believe we have another slide for you?
Well, these are slides that we put together to be pushed out through social media throughout the last couple of months as things changed, and for example, the slide you're looking at now is, we were looking for donations. Thankfully, we'll still take donations, but up at the OEM, 25 Mount Pleasant Place, but we have been able to procure some PPE. Our PPE is a little different than what other people would use, so we have, thankfully, OEMs worked real hard, and we've been able to secure some things. But we still can use some of the things you see up on the screen. Hand sanitizer is, you know, always welcome. So any donations are appreciated.
Thank you. And then we have our bravest.
There they are. Thanks to these guys. Everybody's working real hard. I've been giving a lot of "add-a-boys" and "add-a-girls" to everyone, because you know, it's a tough time, there are a lot of unknowns, and thankfully, our folks are approaching it head-on. They're, we've got it down now, and we're here to serve.
Well, thank you for your service, and for the enormous hours of work time that you've all been putting in, Chief. With this crisis comes a change in our services, and one of our services that has been altered recently is our recycling, the way we recycle. Hasn't been altered too terribly to the point where we have to separate things and rotate alternate weeks. And tonight, we have our recycling coordinator, Nick Salis, here to go over those changes and to talk about a few other items on his list. So thank you, Nick, for coming in this evening to talk to us, and I'll let you start your presentation.
Madam President, we actually dropped Nick's connection, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
So I do not have him here. I was just waiting to see if he was going to come back on.
Okay.
And I'm checking now to see if maybe he called in from as an attendee, and I do not see him there. So hopefully, he, oh, I do see him, he did hold on, please. Let me see if I can move him to talk. Nick, if you can, you'll see a prompt on the screen, there you go. Nick, do you have us? Nick Salis?
Is he there?
He was. And...
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. We have you in voice only right now.
Oh, okay.
Are you able to see the screen at all?
I'm able to see the screen, correct.
Okay, great. Okay, great, so we can follow along with the slide.
I see Anthony there.
You could do worse, Nick.
I could do, yes.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Here you go.
Okay.
So Nick, you could explain, I had a little intro for you, but maybe you can explain the, how we have to alternate with our recycling. And this week was the cardboard newspaper, and yeah.
We started it, as I, my understanding was, we started it last week, on the 20th, which was the same three-day pickup, that didn't change, which is Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, with the three zones. Okay? And we started with our bottles. Yes, some of our residents were confused, but this is only going back to 2013, when we first left the dual-stream program, which was separating alternate weeks, okay? And we started our single-stream programs, which is all-in-one. Okay? So here's what's happening now. Last week, it was all your co-mingle. Co-mingle means your glass bottles, your steel cans, your aluminum cans, number fives, which are a lot of your yogurt tubs, your pot cheese tubs, which all have to be rinsed out, and that's your co-mingle product. Okay? This week, we started with the cardboard, mixed paper, junk mail, clean paper, newspaper, which is all your paper material. Okay? So what we're doing now is, every other week, it's going to alternate. So the first two weeks, which is last Monday, the 20th, was your co-mingle. So if people remember, co-mingle, which is plastics, cans, bottles, glass, so on and so forth. And the second week, which is the alternating week, would be your paper products, which is your cardboard, your junk mail, magazines, clean paper, and newspaper. So that's really the important thing to understand now, until we get everything squared away with our MRFs. Our MRFs are our end markets that do most of the separating of our single-stream program, okay? Which most of them were all shut down. This is the reason why we had to go back to dual-stream. From single-stream back to dual-stream. We had to separate the product, because his assembly line that took care of the single-stream program, which involves a group of people together, weren't able, because our governor wanted distancing, so they weren't able to work. So they had to shut that part of the plant down. So, but, they kept open the dual-stream program. Am I making myself clear, or?
Absolutely. And so next week, Lauren, if you could go to the next slide, so next week, then we switch to the co-mingle.
No, next week, it'll be paper products. Co-mingle, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's okay. And how long will this run until right now, Nick?
I would say, I think, the whole month of May, possibly, and it depends what our governor, if he lets the businesses start doing the work again, letting people in, you know? But co-mingle, like I said, there's people right next to each other pulling contaminated material out of the single-stream product. Single-stream product has everything in it. So that's the problem.
And Lauren, if you go to the next slide, and if folks don't want to wait the every other week, they can bring everything still up to our recycling center, correct?
Yes, our recycling environmental center, which is our drop-off depot, yes, they can bring all the plastics, they can bring all the cardboard, they can bring all your steel, all your paper products, and actually, they can also pick up some mulch and soil there while they're there.
That is great.
So that's open every day from 7:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. Saturdays, it's 7:30 to 4 o'clock.
Okay. And...
My show ID, our residents' my show ID, that they're from the town of West Orange.
That's great. And then I know you want to talk a little bit about these masks and gloves that people are not discarding properly.
Well, that's a big problem. What I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, okay, a lot of the people are following the rules, they're wearing a mask, okay, some of them are homemade masks, and they're wearing gloves. And what's happening is, either they're throwing them in a carriage, on the ground, so on and so forth. These should go into our waste stream. Any garbage can that you see, which takes waste, that's where they should be placed. They should be not thrown around, because what it really does, it's still there, that anybody that picks them up can catch the coronavirus.
Okay, thank you. And what about litter in general?
Well, litter, everything is shut down. Now it's up to our own people, okay, to do their own litter pickup, okay? If they see some papers, cans, bottles, so on and so forth, they should actually, if they're walking the street, pick it up, put it in a plastic bag, and put it in the right location, either recycling or waste. Because at this present time, we do not have any groups going out, doing different sections in the town, which we do, okay? Clean Communities Program, we have Cub Scouts, actually, the hotels, the people volunteer, beauty salons, they all volunteer to do this pickup, and we do it frequently, let me say it that way. So now it's up to us, the residents, to pull together and keep our streets clean, our parks clean, by picking this material up.
Great. Thank you, Nick. Is there anything else that we should know at this point, or?
Yes, on one note, I was looking at our agenda, okay, and I see that Millennium is up for their contract again. I just want to say that they are tremendous people, they helped us, Susan, myself, Joe McCartney, John Linton, retrieve a lot of money through grants, and they work together with us very closely.
Great. Thank you, Nick, and thank you for coming on this evening. I'm going to move next to, and then we're going to go back and, you know, ask all of these questions, or may have a comment for you, but I'm going to move on to Cynthia coming. Cynthia manages the Holy Trinity Food Pantry, as well being the POI for the school district. And I just wanted to bring her on this week to talk about what has been going on at the food pantry. A lot of great volunteers have been down there, have been assisting her, it's been a great need. As the weeks have been going by, there's been more and more need, and more and more families need to be fed. So she's going to talk a little bit about the service there. And also, Cynthia, if you could mention too, what the school district is doing as well, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, hi, everybody, and thank you for having me tonight. We've, generally, we are open five times a month toward the end of the month. We have registered clients, and they come once a month. They get to shop for what they need, and we average about 130 families to 150 families a month, up to like, let's say, 500 people total of people that get fed. And today, for example, 145 people came for food, and, you know, representing, you know, many hundreds of people that are in need. We're kind of heading into this crunch period of trying to maintain, it's less of a money supply and more of a food sourcing supply, but you know, we're doing our best, working with the food bank, working with some other organizations, you know, we've been getting individual donations, and that's all great. We've also been working with the Department of Senior Citizens with Laura Van Dyke, and they sent us the information, and we'll shop and deliver for seniors and high-risk residents that can't get out. And Michelle, you've been one of the people that's been helping us with our deliveries every week, so you know how it can get. It can get a little crazy, and we've had a youth, like a group of young people from town, the Pandemic Task Force or something, and they've been helping us. And then last week, when our numbers started to go up so much that we had to start getting more food than we normally do at the food bank, the West Orange Police stepped in, and we've been able to use their trailer for some trips, and they've been helping us at the door and with bagging, and you know, we're just doing our best to get through on a week-to-week basis right now.
And Cynthia, anyone can come down to the food bank in need on those days?
Yeah, we're not limiting that, yeah, we're not limiting that. I mean, normally, like I said, people need to register, but right now, all those compliance requirements have been waived by the Community Food Bank and the USDA and the State Food Allocation Program. So they can come, I mean, I'd rather they were coming once a week. I don't, you know, we can't control how many times people are coming, or the number of people coming, but today was our largest day so far, so.
And can you talk a little bit about what the school district has been doing for the families, for the students?
Well, the first week, yeah, the first week, when they went into the, like, the forced vacation week, we provided the school district with 153 bags of food, like lunch-related products, to help the families in need for that week. And then our food service provider, Machio's, is now providing for free reduced lunch students, like a breakfast and a lunch, that gets, I think they send it out to schools. they, I think they send it out to schools, uh, a couple of times a week and people, parents can come and pick them up. Uh, they also started their own little food pantry. Um, Dr. Cascone was very enthusiastic about also having some food on hand if anybody showed up at Central Office. And so they have, they have some boxes of food up there if people need to stop by.
Well, that's great. And I think we have a slide next of where someone could send a donation for the food pantry?
Yep. Yeah, that's, that is correct. Uh, and they can, uh, contact me or they can, uh, if they need, if they want to make a food donation, uh, we're open this week, Tuesday, third, well, we're open today. We're open Thursday, Friday, ten to twelve. If they want to stop by with a donation or contact me, they should have my info.
And, and what is something that they usually could need that you?
Well, this week, you know, it, it varies from week to week. This week, we totally, we ran out of rice today. We ran out of pasta. We need pasta sauce. What? Uh, no, I got that. I got jelly today at the food bank. Uh, but I would say those three items, we're gonna run out of juice, but I'm not gonna worry about that. But I would say for this week, my crunch is, is rice, pasta and pasta sauce.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, Cynthia.
You're welcome.
And I know you, Chris Bambinski, um, I don't know if you want to mention somebody for volunteers and?
Yeah, my folks from, from United Presbyterian Church up in, uh, Saint, the Saint Cloud area, my husband. They, everybody's been, you know, we've all been working really, really hard to try to keep up with the demand. So. And thanks to the community for their generosity too.
And, and I know you've been going, uh, seven days a week and, and I know the community really appreciates that. So, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, with our four guests, I would like to open up comments and questions to my colleagues because I know they, uh, would, would like to speak. So Councilman Garino.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you very much. And thank you to our four guests today. Thank you for your updates and information and your continued service to the West Orange community and our residents. Um, you know, to Chief Vecchio and Chief Abbott, um, I know all my colleagues and I wish the best for rank and file and, uh, for the men and women of the West Orange Fire Department, Police Department. I have a question for both of you concerning, uh, shift details. Um, with the number of, um, personnel either being sick or out of commission, how were the extension of any hours for the shifts and how were the rank and file holding up? Other, either chief can answer my question.
Jimmy, you wanna go first?
Sure. So we changed our schedule around to twelve-hour days, split into six teams and we put everybody from the rank of captain on down. Uh, they still fulfill their traditional responsibility we're assigned to prior to the pandemic. However, they work for three twelve-hour days, five, six days off where they're on call for, um, I believe it's eighteen hours, uh, a pay, eighteen hours of forty minutes of pay period. Um, the pay period doesn't necessarily line up. That's two weeks, exactly nine-day cycle. So there's some overlap, but for the most part, um, that sums it up. It's worked tremendously well. Um, these guys plenty of rest in between after coming off three consecutive twelve-hour days. And we've had one instance of a police officer testing positive for COVID nineteen that is on that schedule. And, uh, my understanding, he comes back, uh, tomorrow, actually. So things have hooked up and working out. Um, kept in contact with him intermittently and, uh, you know, he was, he sounded pretty bad there for a while, but, um, he sounded much better the other day when I spoke with him.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Abbott. Chief, Chief Vecchio?
Uh, we've not changed our schedule. Uh, we entertained it, uh, about a month ago. Uh, I talked to some other chiefs in neighboring communities, uh, trying to do the same thing that Chief Abbott was doing and, 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 you know, not, not of as much contact. Uh, it didn't, it didn't suit us. Um, we still have the twenty-four hour, seventy-two hour schedules, so, uh, there is that, that, um, automatic distance with the, with the schedule that we have. Um, as I said in, in my earlier statement, we, we, we did have, uh, a few weeks ago, a bit of a, um, call it a little bit an outbreak within our, within our ranks. Uh, we managed to get through it, uh, with some, um, you know, we've, we've denied any non-scheduled personal leave, so, uh, everyone's, everyone's coming to work unless they're, they're sick. So, um, for the most part. So, uh, that's helped. And then we filled in some of the gaps with overtime and, and, uh, thanks to, to, I, I can't not give credit to Susan Iovino. She's been, in addition to helping out, um, helping out, in addition to, to handling all the contact tracing and, and everything she's doing for the the thousand-plus cases in West Orange, she's also helped out the Police Department and the Fire Department with our situation, with our own staff to try to keep, um, keep everything moving forward. Uh, and she's, she's kept track with any of our, our exposures or, or, uh, positive, um, members and told them when they can come back to work after. So it was, she's been a, she's been a blessing. Uh, but everything's worked out.
Thank you. Uh, and I just have one question for, for both of our chiefs. Um, how are our resources holding up? And what I mean by our resources, how are our vehicles and our equipment holding up to the change in environment, you know, with increased, uh, calls for, uh, you know, medical emergency, uh, police responding? How is our, uh, resources holding up to the extent of that?
Do you want me to go first again, Tom?
Sure.
So it's kind of, um, a, a paradox with this, you know, Tony's calls for service are probably way up with all the illness. Her calls for service are way down. Um, we've been able to, the building and the, the vehicles, uh, decontaminated the, by the DPW, um, staff, uh, multiple times a day. Those guys have, from the inception, those guys have been fantastic. So, uh, then, you know, Joe Marillo, Louis Reynolds, Honey LaPore, and I know I'm leaving some folks out there and I don't mean to, it's not intentional. They've been, they've been great. And I can't tell you how much they've done for us. They've been fantastic.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And the Fire Department's okay?
Yeah, we, I mean, we're, um, our call volume is, is not as, as, um, extreme as you might think. Yes, we had an uptick in our EMS, uh, runs, but to Jimmy's point, we've, uh, we've actually seen a bit of a decline in our, our fire-related calls. I think people are, are kind of hunkered down and, and, um, they're, they're not interested in having people come into their, their homes. Uh, so certain, certain calls, um, that they might have otherwise called the Fire Department for, they're, they're trying to figure out on their own. Um, and as I said before, when we did, uh, see the, the spike in, in COVID-related EMS calls, we did staff and other ambulance, um, because those, those calls require, um, you know, uh, different, different levels of PPE, uh, that they have to don before the call. Uh, in addition, every call requires full decontamination of the ambulance, which takes a lot of time. So, um, we were able to manage it, uh, and, and I, I give credit to the, to the guys and gals in my department. They've, they've worked hard. Um, a lot of them have worked long hours, especially during that, that period where we had a lot out on isolation. Uh, we were asking, you know, uh, people to work twenty-four hour shifts and then sometimes work another twenty-four hour shift. And on an ambulance with, with, uh, having to don PPE every call, it's very taxing. So, um, thankfully, things are, are leveling off a bit. So, uh, but, um, that's where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Vecchio. Thank you, Chief Abbott. Thank you, Cynthia, for all you do. And thank you, Nick, for all you do in the Department of Public Works. Thank you. And thank you, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Kukrovjak.
I just really, uh, wanted to sort of follow up on what Chief Abbott was saying, I think, about some of the illnesses in the department because I, my connection sort of dropped off there for several seconds and I didn't hear what he said. But I also just wanted to ask both of you, uh, sort of, uh, a general question about the incidences of infections, the virus infections in your department. Have you been able to determine, uh, the source of these infections? And for example, I know the police, uh, have to gather quite consistently in, in closed spaces. And of course, the fire, uh, the, the fire people, for the most part, are living in this, in the, uh, uh, the facilities. And so I just wondered, were, were some of the problems because of the closeness? And if that was the case, what happened and what did you do to sort of fix those issues?
So in, in our instance, in the Police Department, Councilman, uh, the one officer in patrol who tested positive, the contact, he lives in another municipality, the contact tracing occurred from that. Uh, we would have been notified if it was expected that we, um, were the source of that spread and we were not. So we have no reason that our police membership was, uh, you know, subjected to that, uh, or, or subjected the bill officer to it. Um, I'm sorry, I dropped off. I was explaining that he was returning to duty tomorrow. Um, I had spoken to him a few times throughout his illness and, um, he, he did sound pretty bad there for a while, but he sounded much, much better when I talked to him a couple of days ago. So, uh, we're welcoming, welcoming, welcoming him back, excuse me. And, uh, we have no, at that point, we'll have no officers outside with, with, uh, COVID-related illnesses.
That's great. Uh, with regard to the Fire Department, uh, we've had seven tests positive. Uh, but we've also had probably another four, uh, who have had symptoms that were, um, likely, uh, COVID nineteen. Um, they're, uh, they were told by their doctors that, um, that they, although they tested negative, uh, they could have been a false negative. The symptoms were, were pretty extreme. So, uh, we treated it as, we treated for them as if it were, as if they were positives with regard to isolating other, uh, people who had been in contact with them within seventy-two hours. Um, in terms of your question about how, um, how the exposures were, were caused, that's almost impossible to, to know. Um, we have, we have, um, we, we're transporting patients every day. Um, and, and there's, it's, it's, it's hard to know if, if, if an exposure was, was from a patient or if an exposure was from someone's wife who is currently working or from, you know, being in the firehouse or being in a rig with someone. Um, we've really not, you know, contact tracing is done, obviously, but, but, uh, we've, we've taken it. The approach we've taken is, is if they present with symptoms, we assume that they have the virus. And, and we react that way. And our, our policy has been, uh, anyone who has been exposed within, uh, for a ten-minute, for longer than ten minutes, uh, closer than six feet, um, that person, and usually that would be someone who shared a, a rig with someone. A little bit different, the, the police and the fire. Police, the, the patrolmen are, and, and, uh, patrol officers are, are in a car by themselves. Well, we work as teams. So, so they're all together. Uh, so for example, if someone, if someone tested positive or had symptoms, we'd have to put out the, the, the other crew that they worked with as well. Um, as I said, we had a couple of weeks that were, uh, tough for us because of that. But in terms of trying to determine where they were exposed, that's very difficult to do. So.
Okay, great, great. I'm, I'm glad to hear. Uh, I, I also wanted to follow up. Uh, at the last council meeting, I had asked some questions, uh, primarily having to do with, uh, the long-term care facilities in town and, uh, the, the, some of the people from the Health Department, sort of declined because they, they were, uh, thinking that it was a privacy or a HIPAA issue. And, uh, since that time, uh, the state has acknowledged, you know, a, a, a problem in this sector with the long-term cares. And, uh, last week, the state began posting reports of confirmed cases and deaths, uh, in, uh, in the nursing homes and facilities. And so I wanted to try to, uh, determine if we could get, we, meaning the council and I guess the, the, uh, the residents here, more detail about what's going on with, uh, the long-term care and the other senior facilities in town. Um, subsequent to the state putting these numbers up, uh, by individual institutions, uh, some of the towns around us, Livingston, Cedar Grove, West Cobble, are also putting up, uh, long-term care statistics. And, uh, Livingston in particular was reporting on the number of confirmed cases, the number of deaths and the average age of the COVID deceased residents in long-term care. Is, is that something that, uh, you, uh, either of you have, uh, tonight?
Uh, well, as I, I, you had said, um, all the questions, Councilman, I, I tried to answer as best I could. Um, I, I don't, that's a, that's, that's managed through the Health Department. Um, so I, I, I had recommended that, um, my first, my first thing is I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what, what's not being released that you're saying needs to be released. As far as everything I've seen, um, that, that the Health Department through OEM, through the mayor, has been, there's been ages, there's been, uh, number of, of, of cases, number of, of recovered cases, number of deaths, um, ages of those deaths. Um, I, I, unless I'm, I, I'm, I'm not sure what it is, what else you're looking for. I'm sure if it's available, it's available. It sounds like you, there's a, uh, from, from what you had sent, you sent me a link. It looks like the information is out there already. Am I, am I missing something?
It's, it's, it's out there, it's out there from the state and it's also out there, say, from Livingston, but it's not out from the, from the town. And, and I don't, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm looking for information about the senior facilities in town, the long-term care facilities in town. And, uh, either you have the numbers or you don't.
Well, I can, I mean, I can, I can tell you from our pers, I can tell you, um, I, I don't know specific, I know that the, the, the number of deaths in the long-term care facilities represent the majority of the deaths in the, in West Orange. I mean, I don't know if that's a, I, I know that simply because I've been in, I'm on this, this, this COVID task force and, and these, this information is out. I don't know the names of anyone. I don't know family. You had mentioned about family members of people. I don't know family members. There's, that's not, that's not for me to know. Um, I know personally the Fire Department, yes, we've, we've responded, I said that in, in my opening, um, that we've responded to close to a hundred and seventy-five calls at the, what we consider a long-term care facility. I didn't include, because there's a, there's a difference between an assisted living long-term care facility and, you know, the deadened house and the rented house. So I didn't include that. Um, but, but yes, we've responded, uh, and that's information I, I mean, I can share. We've, we've been to, um, uh, Summit Street thirty times in the, in the past thirty-two times, uh, since March first. Um, and they're all, you know, their number's higher than normal. Um, so I, I can't get into the specifics of, of what the calls were about, um, nor, quite frankly, do I know who from those facilities has passed from, from COVID nineteen. Um, so we may have transported and then maybe a week later they passed. So I, I don't, I don't have that information. Um, and I'm, and maybe, maybe the Health Department does. Um, but again, I'm not, you had mentioned in your, in your questions that, um, that there were families that were, um, that were not getting information from the facilities, et cetera. And I, I, I feel, I feel for them. If we're, if we're me, I, I, I would, I would go to the facility, quite frankly. I would go. I don't, I don't know what, what we can do at a private facility when a, when a resident has a, has an issue. I, I mean, if we could, I, and I had said that the, in this part, I do know, um, that, that the facilities are governed by the state, not by the local Health Department. So, um, so if, if there is an investigation of some sort, it comes from the state. It doesn't come from the West Orange Health Department or the West Orange Police Department or the West Orange Fire Department. Um, so I know it may be frustrating, but that, that's a question that would maybe have to go to the, the State Department of Health.
Yeah. So, so that's fine. I, I just really wanted to know if you had the numbers. Um, when I referenced in my written questions that I had sent you, I guess, yesterday, uh, that, uh, the families, I was actually asking about whether West Orange has identified any problems with that information flow that's required by state regulations, uh, based upon the fact that, at the last council meeting, uh, Ms. DeNova, who's the head of, uh, the Health Department, said that, that the, uh, the nurses were in touch with each one of the facilities on a daily basis. So I thought that if there were problems, that they would, they, meaning the nurses, would know about them. So that's why I referenced them. I certainly was not trying to find out individual names or anything like that. Again, I'm just trying to find out.
And I, and Councilman, I, 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 you're correct. They, they are because the, 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 an overwhelming number of cases are coming from the assisted livings. Unfortunately, that's, um, so, so the, the, the nurses and the other, uh, public health professionals who are doing the contact tracing, that's part of what they're doing. that's part of what they're doing. So, so yeah, they, they do speak to them. But again, I'm not, as I said, that Mrs. De Nova would be the, the person to ask. But I'm not sure she has maybe the specific information you're looking for either.
Okay. And I, I do want to, I do want to say thank you to the mayor because on a daily basis, he is providing some of this information. He provides it generally for the entire population.
Oh, we're losing you, Councilman.
And again, I'm just trying to see what's going on with the, the long-term cares. The West Orange Long-Term Cares have two, in eight of the 11 long-term care facilities. Am I having problems with my connection again?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not hearing you.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Can you, can you hear me better now?
I can.
I'm Councilman.
Okay. I don't know how much you missed or how much I missed. Cynthia, your, your cat is behind your.
The beauty of these home, uh, home sessions.
Can you get your cat?
They can't be, that can't be seen on the.
Yeah. Okay. Um, uh, did, did Chief Abbott have anything to add to this conversation?
Again, I, I'll, I'll just try to get through this as, as possible. The state has said that as of.
Oh, we're losing you, Joe.
Okay. If you can hear me, why don't you just move on to the other council people? And maybe by the time you finish with that, I can, I'll have a better connection.
Okay.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Kocoviac, if you have yourself on wifi, if it's possible, if you can get a hardwired into your modem, that might help that issue.
Okay. Okay, then one more.
Yeah, I actually have the hardware, the hardware from.
Okay.
You may have to end the meeting, end your meeting and come back into the meeting using the link and that might help refresh your signal, which I think you might have just done. Okay.
Okay, great. Lauren, if we can move on to Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes. Just, Miss Matute Brown, just make sure you unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. First, just want to express my heartfelt sympathies to families who have lost.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my bad. Okay, there you go. It was for the question. Sorry.
Not yet. That's next.
Just expressing my heartfelt condolences and sympathies for all those who have lost loved ones, friends, neighbors. It is devastating for us all to, to experience this and experience this in spirit with you all. To all of our community members who are stepping out in the face of all of this. Cynthia, Nick, and all of our other OEM volunteers, thank you so very much for what you're doing. I, I got a, a small confession to make. And as much as I am immunocompromised, I wish I could be out there with you. But I support as much as I can from the background, but just wanted to say thank you so very much for putting yourselves out on the line for, for our fellow neighbors and residents. Thank you. Chief Abbott, thank you so very much. I, I, I do have to say, I don't know if he's still on. I don't see him.
I'm back on. I, I lost, even the computer shut down.
For your department, I have to say I had an incident on Coral Circle a couple of weeks back and the response was pretty amazing. It was someone that was from out of town. And I'm sharing this just to bring attention, to raise awareness to our residents. When we ask people to stay home, you're not just endangering yourself, but you're endangering our, our first responders who we love, appreciate, and most importantly, need more than anyone to stay healthy. This response ended in an arrest on, on our circle. And what struck me the most was the, the closest that our officers have to come in contact with whomever it is that they are approaching, whether it be a stop or an arrest. And for the benefit of some residents, not residents, but whoever it is that they're speaking to, approaching, it was necessary for that person to be able to understand the police officer, for the police officer to lower his mask. You know, and I think that, that, that is incredibly, but it more so for the person to understand what the instructions were. So I'm, I'm really going to just say thank you to all of our police officers for putting themselves out there and, and ask our residents to continue to stay home because you're endangering other people by going out needlessly. I know they're long hours, but the response was, was immediate and, and it was handled professionally. But I was, I was so filled with anxiety watching the officer speak to someone who unfortunately yet to, couldn't understand him very well because of the mask. So please stay home and thank your officers for, for me personally.
Will do.
And Chief Vecchio, thank you so much. I, I, you, you're meant to and you're firewomen as well, putting themselves on the line. I, I said yes, that yesterday or the day before, we're close to St. Barnabas Hospital on Coral Circle. And I, I just said yesterday to my husband, I'm hearing a lot more ambulance, you know, sirens out. And that was a little unnerving. And that's for me, just listening to those sirens go by. For all the calls that, that you have to respond to, I can't imagine what that stress level is like. But a debt of gratitude for all that your department is doing, for all that you're doing for our residents.
Thank you.
I have to say with respect to, and I was looking at Councilwoman Kocoviac's links that he sent for Cedar Grove. And the information that they're providing is very similar to what the county disseminates. So I need a little bit more time to look into it, but I think that perhaps he, he's looking for information that is more specifically spelled out with the senior citizen facilities. And that is something that perhaps the health department has. I don't know if that's something that you would have. But it is very much the information that Cedar Grove puts out. It looks like, I don't want to say a copy and paste, but it's very similar to what the county information is disseminated from. So perhaps that, that might help a little, but just wanted to say thank you to all for doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Courtney?
Sorry.
Are you muted?
Yeah, no, I unmuted you. One second. I got you. Now you can unmute yourself. We were playing a tag there. There you go.
Thank you, Lauren. Michelle, I wanted to say thank you to you for this format. I know it does take longer than our typical conference agenda, but I subscribe to a planning publication called Smart Cities. And one of the things, the most important thing is educating the public and keeping the public informed. And yes, the county sends out information every day. The mayor is posting information every day thanks to all the information from the Office of Emergency Management. So thank you for providing this format to keep our residents informed. Thank you to the chief for again, informing our residents on staying safe and the scams and those warnings. To Chief Vecchio, I appreciated the fact that you actually had visuals of what people can donate because so many residents are asking, how can they help? What can they do? Cynthia did the same thing. I had spoken to her during the week. I asked her about the food pantry and of course, donations are greatly appreciated. But specific items, this week she happened to mention rice and pasta. But people need to know that because if they're shopping, they can buy a case of something and donate it. So I, I, I just appreciate the information that's being disseminated. And Nick too, on recycling. I spoke to a recycler just this week and they said with so many people staying home and working from home, they, they are seeing an uptake, uptick in the recycling tonnage by tons. So people recycling, staying at home. Just really, it's a thank you to everyone out there. And I like the, I like the plug from the chief and Nick about Millennium Strategies. They've been wonderful to work with. They actually bring things to our attention as, you know, and it's the other way around too. We have ideas we share with them, but they bring information to us as well to work on. So that's a nice long list that they sent us. We asked for the annual report. There are plenty of things on there that we can work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did you get, Lauren, do we have Councilwoman Kocoviac back?
Yes, we do. Councilman Kocoviac, if you can unmute yourself. Nope, you can't. Okay.
Nope. Okay. So, Council President, I wanted to say what the comments that are being made about the house, the different senior homes and things. The health director, only because I am helping still with the cert team and doing an outstanding job with the Office of Emergency Management and the Health Department, the Health Department, the Health Director issues executive orders and they are going to all of the senior houses and the private facilities. So yes, they may be controlled by the state, but the Health Director is definitely involved and keeping them informed as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And did you, did you have anything else? I don't want to cut you off.
Nope, just really a thank you.
Okay, then, 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 thank you. I'm not sure if we're going to get Councilwoman Kocoviac back, but to Lauren, just let me know. But just real quick, I last night spent some time with Susan Iavino and Nick Allegrino on, on the phone. And the reason why I didn't ask them to come on this evening is because they're putting in, you know, 14, 15-hour days. And I wanted to also get some information from our chiefs, which has been, which has been great information and from, and from Nick and Cynthia. So I, I do, I did have a conversation with Councilwoman Kocoviac today in regards to that chart that he's looking at, that I saw what Cedar Grove is doing. So we'll investigate that and see if that's possible. And, but I just, I, again, I just want to thank all of you, the hours that have been put in, the time spent with residents and just how emotional it has been for all of you. I have time to time heard it in your voices. It's not easy, especially for, for those of us who've known a lot of these people that are sick or have passed, who grew up here in town and, and knowing them for most of our lives, it's, it's, it's been hard. It's, it's been really, really hard and just the fear, fear from some of our residents. So hopefully we're able to get a lot of questions answered this evening. And we thank you for that. So I'm going to let.
Madam President, I believe I have Councilwoman Kocoviac back.
Okay, great. So Councilwoman, if you have another question and, and we'll wrap up. Go right ahead.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, according to my computer, I'm just on audio and that seems to be fixing this, the, the problem short term.
We can see you.
I'm sorry, I need to, okay, I can't see, I can't see anybody or anything. So again, I apologize. If, if I could ask Lauren to do me a favor.
Sure.
Good. Could you send me the link to the Zoom session? Could you send it to a different email address?
Yeah.
I'm going to have to go to a computer with a hardwire.
Okay. There is a chat function on your computer. You can send that to me through the chat. Do you see it on the bottom there?
No, because again, or at least it doesn't appear that I have anything but a, a minimized, minimized, minimized version of the opening screen.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty easy. It's just joe@kocoviac.com.
Okay. Okay, I'll send that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I don't know at what point I was, I was interrupted by my, my lack of wifi, but I was saying that the state has been putting out information since last week about issues with the long-term care facilities. And they were saying that as of April 24th, there were 247 confirmed cases and 46 deaths in, in, in the West Orange Long-Term Care Facilities. Eight of the 11 Long-Term Care Facilities, three of them apparently don't have any infections. It's not reporting recoveries, which is one of the things I was, I was looking for. But as I was saying, and I think some of the other council people had also said this, that the nurses and the OEM overall are in at least daily contact with each one of the facilities. And I was just wondering if there was any information that can be provided tonight about either recoveries or more general, what the, what the trends seems to be in the long-term care facilities.
I think, I think both chiefs are muted, Lauren.
I am muted. One of the issues we found was with the difference in numbers was that the state was counting healthcare workers employed at the long-term care facilities. So you know, if you had 10 workers go out sick, that looked like there was 10 additional cases available. Not the case. This information is reported by the state and by the county. Counties call their numbers from the state numbers and that's what we've been referring people to. We don't, we don't, police per se, for lack of a better term, the long-term care facilities, they come under the state regulations. So other municipalities may be putting information out and I'm not suggesting they are, but that information may not be accurate. We would prefer to put out nothing but accurate information and refer people to the state when they are seeking information. It was on the initial page when the meeting first started, the website and the phone number for residents to call if they have concern with a particular long-term, long-term facility in town. We can't speak, and I know you're not looking for it, but I just want people to be mindful. We can't speak to somebody who calls us and says, my aunt is in one of the long-term care facilities and I want to know if, you know, her, she's positive or, or her roommate is. We can't, even if we knew that information, we couldn't share it. So again, you know, we just want to refer everybody to the state, keep it simple, get the right information. There's both a phone number and a website for contact.
Right. I just did the math on this. If eight of the 11 long-term care facilities, if you break that down by the total numbers, it looks like there's about 30, 30 confirmed in each one of the eight long-term care facilities confirmed with the virus and roughly five, four or five deaths per facility. But then there are three that are reporting no infections. And I'm just wondering, is, is there any insight? Either of you can provide as to why that seems to be that three of the, three of the facilities are not showing any confirmed infections at this point? Because that's obviously great news and if they're doing something that the others aren't, maybe that's something that can be shared with them.
It's probably 10 amount to better luck than good. I, I think that, you know, from what I know in speaking with both Susan Iavino and Gallego Reno and Teresa, it certainly seems like all of our long-term care facilities are very much on top of their game. They're using PDA, they're doing everything that they need to do. The problem is that you have a very susceptible age bracket there. So one, one virus can spread to multiple. You know, again, if anybody has any questions, comments, I would direct them to the.
And if you don't mind, if I like to add, I just, from having family in various facilities and taking care of them, I know some, not all facilities has a hospice and, and some, some, a good majority of these facilities do have hospice care. And I, I know that has to be taken into consideration. So there's I think a lot of variable factors from questions I've been asking the past couple of weeks, you know, looking into the data and, and the whys. But I think that could play into it too. Not everybody takes hospice patients. So that could be a factor.
And the long-term care facilities speak to one another, much the same as Chief Vecchio indicated. He spoke to some of the other chiefs when he's talking about a schedule change. I talk to colleagues throughout the county and the state every day. I'm very confident. Every day. I'm very confident that these long-term care facilities are speaking to one another, borrowing PPE from one another when well, they're all in communication with the EOC and Nick Allegreno and Susan and Teresa. Very comfortable that everything's, that can done is being done.
Okay.
And I guess, I guess there's no information about recoveries either in the long-term care facilities. I know the mayor talks about that in general and for the entire town, but any information about recoveries?
I don't believe we have that information specific to the long-term care facilities.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. At the last council meeting, I thought I understood a member of the OEM team say that the state had been involved with some of the facilities in town and, but couldn't get any more information. Is there any information that you can give us about what the state was doing, why it was doing it? And what the impact had been, what the status is?
As it relates to what specifically, I'm not sure exactly what the.
The state, the state sending people into some of the facilities here in town.
Well, that's because the state oversees the long-term care facilities, not the township. The local health departments do not oversee long-term care facilities in any means.
I understand that, but given the number of long-term care facilities in the state, I suspect they don't go to every one. They only go to the ones that they have some particular interest. And that's why I was trying to find out whether there was some particular interest, whether they had problems, issues.
None that we're aware of and, you know, I'm not saying your suspicions grounded in more than a hunch, but you know, we can't, I can't really respond to what you may, may or may not suspect. You know, we're not aware of any problems unique to West Orange nursing homes, long-term care facilities.
Okay. According to the mayor's statistics, only about 25% of the confirmed cases and just under half of the deceased residents with the virus in town have been in the senior facilities. Which means there's been a large number of, a large number of people who were affected below the age of 65. Is there, is there any insight you can provide us as to why not only that's such a large proportion, but also it seems to be, seems to be ongoing in terms of flattening the curve? We've been in the lockdown for five or six weeks, but we still seem to be reporting significant numbers of deaths and, and new infections.
I spoke with Susan and Nick both earlier and my question, I think, goes to heart of what you're asking, and our numbers are not out of line with the state numbers. So, you know, there's a bunch of reasons that the curve, as it begins to flatten, will spike back up. So it's not, it's not anticipated that the curve will drop off the way it went up. It's going to come down much more, much more slowly, much more gradually, and it's going to spike up and down as it comes down. And if you looked at a graph line with West Orange, it should be pretty much in line with what the state graph line.
Just a couple of other questions that I had sent over. Do you have any data on the, the activities of the contact tracing in terms of how many, how many contact attempts? How many successful contacts? Anything like that?
I don't have that data with me. I know that the health center and you know, shout out to the board of ed because the nurses have really stepped up to assist with this, too, with the contact tracing. Everybody's really been very diligent working on it. You know, if they, if the person, turns out they live in a different town, it'll get transferred to that town. So we wouldn't remove that data. And sometimes you see the numbers adjusted for that. You know, I don't know exactly how many people were contacted and weren't contacted, but I know, I know anybody who was in contact certainly wasn't for lack of effort.
There's been some discussion about some of the town employees who have been confirmed cases and what happened to them. Is there any overall numbers either of you have that indicate the number of, of town employees who have been confirmed cases who, or presumed? How many of them have been hospitalized? Whether any of them died and the number of recoveries just for the town employees?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any deaths of town employees related to COVID. Don't recall specifically anybody being hospitalized. I don't want to say they weren't. If it, if it did happen, you know, it's a, it's a private matter for one. And if the employee lives out of town, it's not our investigation anyway. So we may not even have that information other than for our insurance carrier, if they're insured by us. And that would be highly confidential as well. You know, the, the people I know that had it or were exposed are all on the mend, doing better. We had two exposures in the police department. One's returned and the other one returns tomorrow. The, we have one, I think, out on home confinement for exposure, but not testing positive. And the other one had returned. So, you know, police wise, we're in real good shape. Tony can speak probably better to the fire department and most of the town employees were having work remotely unless they're absolutely necessary that they come into township for one of our other buildings.
I mentioned before.
Councilman, I can address the employees overall. First, I can tell you, we absolutely have had no deaths. And to the extent that we've had any serious cases, they've been far and few between. But we, we did get statistics from our, our third-party administrator. And our incidence of, of Corona-related illnesses is more, lower than one-tenth of the state rate. So our, and that includes all of our retirees as well as our employees. So as a group, as a group, we've done, we've been very, very healthy. And we can't, we, we don't have an answer to your next question. It's why is that? And we don't know the answer to that. And we're probably not going to know the answer to that, at least not for a while. But we do know and we're thankful for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Okay, Councilman, do you have any, any more?
No, there, there seems to be a dearth of, of hard information available tonight. So I think now's a good time to stop my questioning and perhaps in the next couple of weeks, we can actually start getting this information.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Again, to all our guests this evening, I can't thank you enough for coming on and taking the time to answer, answer our questions as well as give some great information to our public. You're gonna, Lauren's gonna relieve you from this call. And we appreciate again, your time. Please keep safe and well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cynthia, and for the chiefs, I'm gonna, you're gonna become an attendee and at that time you're able to stay for the meeting or leave at your leisure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask, Council President?
Sure.
If, if Chief Abbott and Chief Vecchio could stay on the, the call just in case there's somebody at public comment or people at public comment that would like to ask about the virus?
I'll leave that up to our chiefs. I'm not sure. I know we've had them for a while. I didn't ask them to stay longer than that. So I'll, I'll throw that out there to them. They could stay as an attendee. I know Chief Vecchio is still at the firehouse, so I'm not sure about him, but.
Right. I do not have Chief Abbott anymore. I do have Chief Vecchio still in the attendee.
And I think you have Chief Abbott. You don't have Chief Vecchio.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I actually then have Chief Vecchio is in the pool. So I can bring him back over if you'd like.
Okay.
If you'd like, you know.
Okay, so we, we're going to move on to public, I'm sorry, not public comment. We have our redevelopment update, Mr. Sayers.
Let's make sure you unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, how are you?
Good. How you guys doing?
Good.
Okay, just so you know, there have been no changes in any rentals at the facility. I talked to Mr. Diaz today. And there's also been no changes with the sale of the property. So everything is status quo as it was two weeks ago.
Okay. What about Central Avenue?
Central Avenue? I'm not sure where that's at. Richard, are you here? Rich?
I am, I am. I'll be glad to. So again, Central Avenue, and in large part again because of the construction official and Janice Gary Adams, his own official, is totally up and running, as you will recall. It's 100 units. It's owned by Valley Residential. And they have begun occupying it. It's 55 Affordable and 45 Market. And the Affordable, there's a waiting list and they are filling it up. I think there are over 30 of the units are occupied. Again, it's not the perfect time yet, but they are starting to market the other units online. And the people are moving in and these are families and this neighborhood is coming back. I also did, we're, we're trying to get to you as soon as possible a presentation on what I'll call the Biddleman Property. As you know, we acquired that property and Selecta Flash. So that's the subject of an interim redeveloper agreement along with Topkins. And so I am hopeful that they are finishing the concept plans and whatnot. There'll be some shared parking on that that'll help the Valley area and the Luna Theater and whatnot. So again, our boards are, we're trying to do everything we can to move forward on, on those fronts. So again, Central Avenue is up and running.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Trank. And my colleagues, Councilman Guarino, any questions?
No, I'm just going, you know, I, I've answered my question. I wasn't going to answer about retail because if everything's status quo, it means there's no movement on the retail. So that'd be the only question I'd have with Edison Los.
Thank you. Councilman Kukoviac?
I was just gonna ask if there's anything new on phase two of downtown redevelopment?
No, there's nothing new right now. Obviously, they have to finish up some issues with the planning board. And since there's been no meetings, they haven't been able to get before the board. So nothing, nothing new has changed as of yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman, Matu Brown?
Hi, thank you. Just a question, any movement with Essex Green? I'm sorry, Executive Drive. I always do that. Executive Drive.
As of right now, no, we're still status quo with them also.
Well, as to Executive Drive, the, the applicant, they, they have, and I spoke to them earlier this week. They are putting in their plans before the planning board and they are going to ask for a special meeting as soon as the planning board will give them that. So they put in their application to Mr. McQuarrie to get approval for, I'll call it the residential component of Executive Drive.
Thank you. Councilwoman, you done, Councilwoman?
Yes, I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney? Are you muted or?
Thanks. I don't have any questions, but just to clarify on the planning board, our April meeting was a conference call and on our agenda there was Montclair Golf Club. We are having a practice meeting for May 6th. Tomorrow evening, we're having a practice Zoom meeting for our May 6th planning board meeting. And our agenda there is one property on Whittle Sea that is being subdivided. So there is nothing before the planning board for anything with redevelopment right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers, for that update and our council liaison announcements. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Just a quick update for our downtown West Orange. I have some depressing news that we will not have our street fair this year. The timing and the organization and getting it all together, we wouldn't have enough time and not knowing when we revert, now revert to any kind of normalcy. At this point in time, the board has decided that we will not be having a street fair this year. And I'm sorry to say that. It's a great, a great program, a great thing to bring people together downtown. But if I hear anything different to my colleagues and to the residents, I will let you know. On the other thing is, is, you know, we need to support all our vendors, downtown Pleasantdale, St. Cloud, everything else. And it's good to see when our organizations go out and they buy products from, for vendors. But they need to make sure they go visit all our vendors because there are a number of vendors who have constantly given to every organization in the township of West Orange, schools, Boy Scouts, all our programs, different organizations, Mountain Top Out. And I'm hearing from some merchants that they feel they're not being, you know, involved in any of the, of the goings around of, you know, helping out and, and product being bought for them. We need to help all our merchants and it, it, it really, when, when I got merchants calling me, asking them why nobody's come to them, I really don't have an answer. I just want to let everybody know is please, you know, patronize all our vendors. They need your help right now and, and we need them more than ever before. So I just wanted to bring that out. The other thing is on the joint meeting, Laura, I'd like to bring up that slide. This is something I talked about the last meeting, but this is something very, very important. As you know, I represent the township on the joint meeting, which the joint meeting of Essex and Union County, we manage the sewer and waste management and purification of wastewater in, in our area. 15 municipalities that belong to the joint meeting. What we're having is now from our engineers and our environmental engineers and our consultants is we're seeing a huge increase in the number of wipes, sanitary wipes, you know, being flushed down the toilets. And they're starting to back up the sewer line. If you think COVID-19 is a problem, if the sewer system backs up and it starts backing up into your house and into the streets, they're going to have more of a problem than anything else. So if they do say flushable, they're not flushable. Please dispose of them properly. Please do not put them in the, your toilets because it's going to back up the system. And our engineers are telling us right now they're seeing an increase in the number of blockages. And I will update you at the next meeting and let you know how things are going. And one other thing is that, you know, we've all been talking about honoring people in our town, just specifically those our friends and family, neighbors who have passed away due to COVID-19. People have talked about ways of honoring and I think they're all great. But I just wanted to bring up a point that I put on Facebook the other day is that we are replanting trees in our neighborhoods and the trees we've gotten, they don't cost the township anything. And I've reached out to Len Lepore. I think I also sent an email to Nick Solis that we could probably take some of the trees that we're planting, plant them in neighborhoods where we've lost friends and relatives and put a little plaque on them saying, you know, in memory of. I think it'd be a fantastic way of honoring people and honoring them with something that'll be around for years and years to come. So that's all I have to say, Council President. Also, thank you to all our departments, to all our men and women in, in all the services throughout the township of West Orange for all the great things and making West Orange the township that it really is. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukoviac?
Nothing for me. I'm still trying to get back on.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
Would you want to talk about the census for us?
There is the.
I thought you were going to want to do that.
Thank you. I'm looking. I'm saying, wait, that's mine. How are you? Thank you. Yes, I was really, really excited to see that West Orange self-response, we are at 60.2% rate. Well, I just checked it a moment ago. So we've increased from that slide, which is clearly above the national average, right? So we're at 60.2% response rate. The county average is 48.2. So we're doing a really good job, but I want to continue to challenge and encourage each one of you to reach out to your friends, your family, your neighbors and send them a reminder of completing the census. Now more than ever, we are, and in a conversation yesterday, I understand that nationally, right? Nationally, statewide, locally, we are going to be facing an economic tsunami. And we need as many of us to be counted in New Jersey, in West Orange, in our county so that we benefit from the federal dollars that are allotted to us. benefit from the federal dollars that are allotted to us by responding and representation. So, please be sure to, if you have not done so, get onto the census website. You can either call in your response, enter your response online, or respond by mail. It is confidential, it is easy, and it is quick. So, please be sure to complete your census and tell your friends to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you, Lauren. I mentioned before about the Planning Board, the Planning Board will have its first Zoom meeting on May 6th. We're having a practice session tomorrow evening. Jerry, I like Jerry's idea of the planting the trees. We're doing that already on the streets, it's still a very nice idea. I had, as you know, I was sharing an email about Arbor Day. Every year, the Environmental Commission and DPW put together an Arbor Day celebration that this year it was supposed to have been last Friday at Roosevelt Middle School. Since that didn't happen, we've kind of put our heads together to come up with a memorial garden site to be designated for all of our residents, hopefully in the very near future, but there's no telling on that. So, I was just glad that it was unanimous that everyone involved in that decision-making is on board with creating something for our residents. The West Orange Environmental Commission, again, and the West Orange Arts Council, to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, started, I started a photo campaign of things in nature, and it was really beautiful, take our minds off a little bit of circumstances, and we had really beautiful photos coming in, created slides that are posted on both the Environmental Commission page and the Arts Council page. It's not over, there are still photos coming in, and we're going to continue to create the videos on there. I had mentioned the Office of Emergency Management and the Health Department, again, fielding calls and for lunches and delivery services with all of, for our seniors. So, we, through the SERT team, so members of the SERT team are out every day delivering lunches and dinners for residents. Very appreciative. And the Rent a House, though we haven't had a board meeting, the Rent a, because I'm delivering lunches to the Rent a House, keeping all of our board members abreast of information going on at the Rent a House. Again, I just, I really wanted to say thank you again. I know people are looking for ways to donate. To Jerry's point before about supporting local businesses, what's happening with SERT donations are coming in through the Mayor Sunshine Fund, and that is helping to subsidize the lunches and the dinners that are being provided through the restaurants. And it's a limited resource, but I thought it was important to spread that amongst other restaurants. There we go, the Mayor Sunshine Fund. So, donations there are going to support the local businesses that are providing these lunches and dinners, and that is coordinated through Laura Van Dyke in the Health Department. So.
Great. Thank, thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
And to that, another avenue, you could donate through the Mayor Sunshine Fund, is Parry Bashkoff had organized a Mayor's Sunshine Fund Sweat Shirt, T-shirt Program, being distributed through the school district. He, actually, it was Coach Grant that, I'm sorry, yeah, Coach Grant had helped organize that, and we appreciate all his support, and Andrew Mazurek, our football coaches. So, great opportunity to not only support, but also to have some township spirit, which is, you could donate at www.wboe.org/wostrong. So, again, just great community spirit, we're trying to help out our many, our many businesses in the township, as my council colleagues have stated. This week would have been Restaurant Week, and that would have been a great way to help all our restaurants. And, but again, to my colleagues' points, if you go out and they're still there, a lot of them, many of our restaurants are still delivering, either delivering or they have curbside delivery, so look them up and support. I know I get tired of cooking every night of the week, well, actually, my husband helps out a lot, he's really better cooked than I am, but, you know, every once in a while you need a break. So, we celebrated our anniversary the other night and had a nice romantic evening with my son, who's stuck with us for the past six weeks, and helped support one of our local eatery. So, please reach out. I know times are tough for everybody, but our local businesses really do need your support. Let's see, Lauren, what's our next slide? Oh, okay, so as we are supporting all, I have to give a shout out to Monica Nieves. She, Monica, had asked the mayor if she could put this sign on the township on Town Hall, "We are in this together," and great, great community spirit. I drove by Kelly Elementary School, there was a sign there as well. So, really, a big shout out to Monica, just seeing on Facebook all the inspiration from so many of our residents. It's just been, it's taken that sadness and shifting it to seeing what we could do together, and we really are in this together. And in that spirit, helping out the food pantry and with all our food deliveries, we need a mask for volunteers. And I have to also give a shout out to my fellow congregants from Lady of the Lord's Church. I was on a call with Father Jim a while back, and a few of my neighbors and members of the church have been very busy passing time at home, and I have to ask, thank Ms. Anne Flue, Julie Coats, Annette Charmante, Maureen Riley, and Lisa Westheimer for, thank you, thank you, thank you, they've been busy, and I know there's been many residents out there donating masks and whatever they can donate to the various different organizations, but we've been giving them out at the food pantry to serve for all the volunteers, the mask, and been delivering them to folks in the senior houses that have been wanting them, and what a great job they're doing. And last, I just want to, again, thank all of our township employees, our OEM, and everyone that's been working so hard. Any of our administrators that are on the line tonight, Mr. Sares and Mr. Gross, I know it's been a long haul these past couple months. Again, any of our seniors out there, reach out to Laura Van Dyke, Dorothy Sanders, at They will help you, they are there, they may not answer your call immediately, but they will get back to you, and they've been instrumental, and even as busy as they've been working with the residents, they've also been writing a grant. We're going to talk about a grant writer tonight. They've been writing a grant for ARC, for senior outdoor exercise equipment that we're looking to put up at Degnan Park. Just a nice piece there, Councilwoman McCartney was talking about the trees up there and planting, and I know Billy Keogh, a month or so ago, were talking about another grant we're hoping to get for the field. So, we're just looking at some nice improvements up there at Degnan Park, which would be a nice place to do a memorial. So, we're looking forward to all those good things. And just one last shout out to, you know, Mr. Keogh's been working on, I mean, him and I have been having a few conversations, you know, with Recreation Department, you know, one of their tasks is to bring the township together, and, you know, obviously, that can't happen right now. So, he's been working on some creative avenues to try to, to keep our residents active. I know the PAL has been doing online workouts with the PAL teams, the baseball teams, which has been great, and so everybody has been really creative, and thank you to Mr. Fagan, too. He's been out there three nights a week with his, with his show, entertaining many of our residents. So, again, going back to the sign that's up here, "We are in this together," and it really shows, we should really be proud of our community. And with that, Madam Clerk, we close our conference agenda. We appreciate the public for being patient, and Madam Clerk, if you could open up the public meeting?
Sure. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31st, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7th, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Okay, we are now going to open up for public comment. We appreciate everyone for their patience, we hope you appreciated the information as you waited, and the, our moderator, Lauren Groctezes, is going to signal you into public comment. Please note, you will have five minutes, you'll have the timer. Please state your name and your address for us when you go to speak, and after the five minutes up, we will go on to the next person, and then answer all public comment at the end of the session after the last person has spoken. Okay, our moderator?
Mr. Fagan, follow the prompts on your screen, please.
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are all good.
Yeah, yes, so, good evening, excuse me, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Madam Council President, and your esteemed council colleagues. I just want a few quick announcements. I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said, but residents can stay informed by going to our Facebook page and to our website, and certainly those that don't have online access can go to TV 36, Channel 3645. To a lesser degree, a lot of the information is posted up there, so that everyone should be able to get some information in some regard. I want to point out about the Recreation Department, up on our Facebook page, there was a notice there today or yesterday, posted by Recreation Director, Mr. Keogh, that most of the spring programs will likely be canceled because of the home confinement situation, and the pool, it's yet to be undetermined if the pool is going to be open or not, but all preparations are being made, so that if the all-clear does come, that the pool will be ready for the summer season, so we can remain hopeful in that regard. One other thing I want to point out, and it's kind of obvious, but it's certainly worth mentioning, is phone a friend during this time. You know, create a routine, reach out, phone a friend, stay in touch, you know, just the sound of the familiar voice can be certainly very uplifting during these times, which can certainly be very dreary. And finally, if this is helpful, I just want to point out, Councilman Kocoviac had pointed out earlier, on our Facebook page, there are three pie charts that list deaths by age, cases by location, and deaths by location that specifically refer to the long-term care facilities. That information was posted on April 22nd and is up on our Facebook page. I don't know that it has been updated as of yet, but it is anticipated that information will be updated, but certainly, as was pointed out earlier, Mayor Parisi is putting daily updates on the West Orange Facebook page. So, that is it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and if anybody has any questions, as always, I'll be willing to answer them best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Okay, do we have anyone else out there?
Okay, yes, I do have Claire Silvestri. You will have a mute on your screen. If you can follow that prompt, please. And can you hear us, and can we hear you?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just wanted to talk a little bit about testing for town residents for COVID. I appreciate all of the information that Mayor Parisi has been posting daily. I've been keeping track of that, as well as the state figures that are posted on their dashboard for long-term care facilities, and it's, you know, it's been very concerning to see how many cases and deaths are coming out of our many nursing homes. At the same time, it's only about, I'm surprised, it's only about 50% of the deaths, and I, you know, I think maybe a third of the cases. And so, we have an issue, there's concerns of, we have issue just in the greater West Orange area outside of the long-term care facilities, and the governor has been saying that the way to flatten the curve is through testing. And in looking at the figures from the mayor's reports, it appears that we've only had about 1,700, maybe 1,800 residents in town being tested, and that's, I think it's less than 4% of our population. So, I was wondering if the township has any plans to get more people, a lot more ramping up testing, getting a lot more residents tested. I had questions about whether first responders and nursing home residents are getting priority testing. From what I heard from the two chiefs, it doesn't sound as if all of the first responders have been tested, and I would just like to hear whether the town has some plan coming up in the near future to get more residents tested. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Okay, anyone else like to speak this evening?
Okay, I have Mr. Paglisi. Give me one moment here. You can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you, you had a busy day, and you made it, thank you.
Yes, barely. This is Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFancenzo. First, I want to just provide some remarks to Ms. Silvestri's comments before. In our conversations with state health officers, they're actually discouraging municipalities from conducting their own health, their own screening sites because of the lack of PPE. So, what I'm going to do is, in leading off of that, we've been conducting a testing site in Weekway Park since March 26th. We've finally gotten through a 5,000-name waiting list, and we are going to reopen our website, that's open currently, so people can, again, log on to there, it's by appointment only. Also, on our website, in the, there's a bunch of links for coronavirus information. In the update section, the coronavirus update, there are Essex County testing sites, some of them you may have to go through your healthcare provider, so there's different requirements for each. Some of those sites specifically offer testing for first responders, so there's an avenue if the township wants to get their first responders tested. Also, I know on specific dates, at the state testing sites, they do open those up just for first responders. Councilwoman McCartney had mentioned this earlier, and that one of the keys to getting everyone through this pandemic is information. Just like the West Orange website, we're putting up a lot of information, it's been, it gets updated fairly regularly, so we just invite people to check back. Every so often, our Small Business Office is regularly looking to find out what programs are available for small businesses. We've put up some social service resources that would provide people with contacts in case they're involved in domestic violence or suicide, you know, things like that. We have to be pretty cognizant that the situation that we're all in, while some of these may not get reported, they're still in existence and they're still happening. And then finally, my day today was filled. And then finally, my day today was filled at Branch Brook Park. We had an emergency food giveaway. We provided 2,000 residents from throughout the county with a box of food and some produce. This was a partnership with the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, and the way this, the food was packaged, it was enough to provide 40 meals. That's four-zero meals. It was, we did create a little bit of a traffic jam. I don't want to say that the event ran perfectly, but we did get through it pretty well, and we are looking to do other events in other portions of the county. That would depend on what resources that food banks, the Community Food Bank and other food sources have. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does the, do any of my colleagues have a quick question for Mr. Paglisi right now?
Everyone is muted, if, in case you do, so make sure you unmute yourself.
Council President, I just wanted to, since Mr. Paglisi had mentioned that the state was discouraging municipalities from having their own testing sites, is that something that if municipalities were to have a sufficient amount of PPEs either donated or somehow they were able to acquire some, is there a process that the municipalities have to go through? Is this something that state approved or?
The PPE is only one-half of the test. You'd also have to get the testing kits from a lab. And probably if you wanted to pursue that, your municipal health officer would be the best resource for you. If she has any questions, I'm sure that our health officer, Maya Lordo, would be available. But as we all know, we're all in, we're all competing for the same supply of PPE and test kits. So until something comes out in more of a mass market as far as testing, in the past couple of weeks, there's been some movement and some news about some new tests that are coming that may be quicker and cheaper and faster and all that. You know, it's, that's the directive that we've heard from the state as far as towns starting their own testing site.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else for Mr. Paglisi before I let him go?
I have a question, Council President.
Sure, Councilman.
Thank you. Anthony, it's good to hear your voice, and I hope you and your family are well, and thank you for being with us tonight. Just a quick question, not related to COVID, but on the issue of the tree pruning in the reservation on the main roads, how is the status of that going?
So the, since April 20th, which was last Monday, a tree company representing JCP&L has been cutting or trimming trees along power lines on Brookside Drive, which is in the Millburn section of South Mountain Reservation. I'm told that they should be finishing this week, weather permitting. And we have some rain in the forecast for, I guess, Wednesday and Thursday, so I'll probably get an update. I can let everyone know on, probably by Friday, I'll know if they're going to continue the following week. But it was, it was a two-week project.
Thank you, thank you very much, Anthony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And Anthony, just to piggyback on that, I was going to mention it, but Councilman brought it up. I'm going to say an email tomorrow, we, from the public PSEG on, by Walker Road, there's a, a Northfield resident sent me, there's a fire hydrant that's blocked from some of the remains of the tree cutting, so I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Anthony. We appreciate you coming in this evening.
You're welcome.
We know it was a long day, and we really appreciate the county support with, the county support with feeding so many families. But just real quick, I have one more thing. We've been talking about these long-term care facilities. I'm not sure how much of the meeting you've been following with the, with some of the nursing homes in the county. Do they, are they supposed to provide their own testing to all their residents? Do you know offhand with the county facilities?
I would have to check with our health officer. I don't know, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
But I can find that, sure, I can let you know.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, batted out of order there, but we had Anthony here with some important information. We always appreciate all our updates from the county. They've been very informative throughout this whole crisis. Our moderator, Lauren, do we have anybody else out in the public that would like to ask a question?
We did have someone who did raise their hand, but then they lowered it themselves. I just want to give them the opportunity in case they made a mistake of lowering it, if they wanted to re-raise their hand.
Okay.
Nope, that was it then.
Okay, great. So we're going to close out public, public comment. We appreciate all our speakers. Again, Mr. Fagan, you've been great on Facebook Live with your, with your program, and we always appreciate all you do for a township. I know, maybe, I'm not sure if Chief wants to answer some of Mrs. Krokoviac's questions in regards to, regards to the testing or with the cases, if you have any comment.
Yeah, I'll answer in reverse order. The long-term care facilities are doing their own testing, so that takes care of that portion of.
Okay.
The first part was more around testing, I believe, for residents. Right now, only symptomatics are being tested, and, you know, as Anthony Paglisi accurately pointed out, we're all, we're all in competition for the same limited resources. So to get everyone tested at once, we're not really there yet. I'm not suggesting the governor's not on point, but we can't do that yet. We don't have the, it would overwhelm the labs, the tests aren't available, and what would really occur is people who are symptomatic and ill wouldn't have tests available for them to be monitored. So, you know, for right now, I think we have to take it one step at a time. Every morning, I have a statewide conference call with the Attorney General's Office and the New Jersey State Police. Essex County's been fabulous. You know, my compliments to Sheriff Fontor and his staff, they've been great. We've been sharing supplies throughout the county, been sharing information throughout the county. We've been in touch with each other constantly, so, you know, I think we're doing all we can do. We're always open to, you know, suggestions, but there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of minds out there thinking on this every day, talking about it every day, and you have, you know, if you called up all the, the seniority there, I mean, you'd have hundreds and hundreds of years of experience in the health field, law enforcement, fire and EMS, I mean, it's all there. So I think there's a lot of moving parts, but it's working very well. You know, no, we've never seen as a country, we've never seen this before. And to think how well it's working is, really speaks volumes to how talented everyone out there that's in these different fields is, really, you know, we've always had my respect, but this just underscores how wonderful these people really are.
Thank you, Chief. I know Chief Vecchio's still, still there. I didn't know if he wanted to add any, any final comments.
I think Chief, I think Jeff Abbott, let me turn this down. I think Chief Abbott covered everything pretty well, so I don't want to be redundant.
Thank you.
But I did want to say that if anybody has any questions, you know, our phone numbers are all, are all out there, so, so is the Health Department. So we're answering our phones. If anyone has questions about anything offline, please give a call. I know Mrs. DeNova feels the same way. If there's a concern, call the Health Department. Chief Abbott gave out the non-emergency number at the police department. We're all still working, so, so, you know, the only stupid question is the one that's not answered, or something like that. One does not ask.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Really, really appreciate it. My colleagues, I know we didn't have much public comment. Councilman Guarino, any other? I just want to go through quickly. Are you?
I have no, no responses. Thank you, Council President.
Right. Councilman Krokoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I hope everybody can hear me, and I apologize for my connection problems. In the chat, in the chat for this meeting, somebody had, appears to have, presented a question.
Right, I can actually, sorry, this is Lauren, I'm going to cut right in. That was, when I opened up the chat to you, that person did that, and I responded to them that that was not for, like, to communicate with the panelists, and if they wanted to, they could speak during public comment, and they did not raise their hand during that time. So that's why we disable the chat feature so that we don't have people, like, anonymously or posting chat to the panelists. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. I, it was a rather lengthy question, but the, but the punchline is, I want to understand why our cases are so high and what can be done in the future to possibly mitigate such an infection spread. I think that's the $100 million question.
Yeah, right.
And the...
Stay home and stay away from each other. That's how you eliminate.
And wear your mask and gloves, too.
And just in terms of my response to Ms. Silvestri's question, there have been some, I think, preliminary discussions about testing, trying to open up someplace to test for the antibodies, but I'm not really sure where that stands now. And I'll throw that out in case anybody knows anything about that.
Chief, other chiefs, have you heard anything?
I know it's available in West Baltimore right now. The problem is, it doesn't necessarily tell you anything other than you have the antibodies in your system, because the jury's still out on whether or not you can... That's right from the medical community. It's not my opinion. There's just not enough data yet available to conclusively state that you've had this before, you have the antibodies in your system, you will not get it again. So it's not really going to tell us a whole lot. When it's the medical and scientific community determines they want that, I'm sure they're going to encourage people to have, to be tested for the antibodies. It just can be done, as I understand, with a finger stick. It's not even a vial of blood.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Councilman, you good?
Oh, sure.
Okay. All right, great. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No response. I just wanted to add to what Chief Vecchio said, with respect to, if you have any questions, please be sure to contact the appropriate departments. I will share that on two separate occasions, I've been contacted by a resident, and I've directed their issues and needs to Laura Van Dyke, and within hours, there was food and attention, and the need was filled. As busy as they are, they are answering, you know, requests, so please be sure to reach out to. And if you don't know who to reach out to, you know, just call the main number and either the Fire Department or the Police Department. Oh, yeah, everyone is here to assist you. Someone who reached out to me, some, was just, someone just gave them my cellphone number, which is fine as well, my information is out there. So if you don't know who to contact, we're all available, and we'll direct you to the, to the right resources. Please don't be afraid, or shy or embarrassed to reach out. We all need help. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you again for all the information.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Chief Abbott and Chief Vecchio, for hanging in there with us. Next time, conference agenda, I'm hoping we're going to have the mayor here, and I'd like to bring in Mr. Keough, and maybe I'm going to even ask Dr. Cascone. Hopefully, we'll have some kind of inkling of, from the governor, of, you know, what kind of plan we may have moving forward, and hopefully, we could get some more information out to our residents on, you know, what life will be like in the next couple of months. So, so thank you. Like to move forward now with our consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, April 14th, 2020. Consent. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Okay, so I'm going to do what we did last time. We'll stick on this page first. I'm pretty sure we're going to, well, I know I would like for Mr. Gross and Mr. Trank to, to, we'll pull C to talk about Rock Spring a little bit and what's going on there. And I like, you know, just have a short conversation. I'm not sure if it needs to be pulled. Does anybody need A to be pulled, Millennium Strategies?
No, just conversation.
Yes, please, I'd like it pulled.
Okay. Any, any other items on this first page? F is removed. Okay, and, and there's only two items on the next page. Lauren, yeah, great, if you could go there, and then we'll go back. G and H, does anybody need either one of them pulled? I'm going to ask Mr. Gross to give an explanation of, does anyone need those two items pulled? Okay, great, so, let's go, let's start here, because we're on the page. Mr. Gross, can you just give the public and quick over on these two resolutions, 110 and 111, in regards to the bonds?
These are pretty much housekeeping resolutions that are required whenever we go from a bond anticipation note to a long-term bond. We, you know, the analogy, I think, that's fit is a bond anticipation note is like a home equity line of credit, so the interest rate moves on that over time, whereas a bond is more like a mortgage. Once you set it, it's, the interest rates are set for the entire term, 10 to 12 years, whatever the term is of the bond. And so, you know, we've been doing one new issue a year now for the past four or five years, and this is right in line with what we're doing. The interest rates are historically low, and we hope that will continue, although there's certainly, obviously, some uncertainty. And obviously, if we end up not getting a good rate, we'll pacify and go with on anticipation notes. By the meantime, we need the authorization to move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gross. And Lauren, if you'd just go back to the prior page? Okay, great. Okay, we'll talk about C in a minute. Let's go to A, Millennium. Mr. Gross, if you could just state, and there was an increase in the contract, if you could just state why?
Yeah, this, we went out and got quotes for this, that when they came back, they came back with an increase that they're requesting. We looked at their history, and frankly, we've been thrilled with them, you know, not the only one to say that tonight. Last year, in competitive grants that they wrote, it was over $600,000 that they wrote, so they're looking for an increase of $600,000 this year, and the administration supports that request.
And I'll speak to this real quick, just having the opportunity to work with them on, on a couple of grants, one being the Partners with Health Grant that we were able to secure and has been very beneficial to our senior citizen resources. Dorothy Grant, who, I'm sorry, Dorothy Sanders, who is our Senior Livabilities Coordinator, is paid for through that grant. And with talking to many residents and being very thankful, we were able to build back up our senior department to a full-fledged staff of the employees that we have because of that grant. And I know grant writing is very time-consuming, and they're putting in a lot more hours, and so I know they're higher than last year, but again, they meant hours and work and the return on the investment, I can't speak enough to. Also, having been able to be in meetings with Chief Abbott and the school district, they secured a $300,000 cop grant for the school district this year. So, you know, that was instrumental, that the school district was able to take advantage of the relationship. I know they, you know, helped out Mr. QB as well. I'll go down the line here. Councilman Greino, any comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I can not only speak for myself, but also for my pedestrian safety advisory board. Because of Millennium, we've been able to generate a lot of grants, particularly for our walkability studies, our implementation of walkability, particularly in, on the Main Street, Washington School, Edison School area. We just received, because of Millennium's guidance and work, a $10,000 grant for walkability, you know, assistance and engineering for the walkability. So, we're very pleased. They come to our meetings, very accessible. Anytime, they actually come to us and let us know when grants are available and apply for them. So, I have nothing, and you could reach out to any one of my board members on the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, and they will say the same thing. They've educated us, they've helped us understand what we can do and what we can't do, but, and also which grants are reachable. So, that's all I want to say, and I appreciate the work they've done for us. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. There is actually a choice in two different proposals that were made, that we're talking about tonight. There's Millennium, and there's also Bruno Associates. And both of these firms are major firms. They're some of the biggest firms in this part of New Jersey, and they both have a ton of municipal clients and have been doing this for years and years. So, relatively speaking, they're both pretty comparable from a marketplace perspective. Back a few years ago, I'm trying to think what year that was. Was it 2015, 2016? These two also squared off for the grant writing contract. And at the time, Millennium was about $3,000 more a year. And the council majority chose Millennium, and they seem to have done a very good job since then. But also since then, Millennium has raised their prices about 40%, whereas Bruno has kept them stable. And now, the gap between these two has opened up by about 58%. Bruno is still at 25,000. Millennium is now being proposed at nearly $40,000. And I just wanted to point that out to everybody, because I think this is going to be a very, very challenging budget year, and I think we should be looking everywhere we can, we can save money. In this case, we would, we'd be saving almost $15,000, and almost certainly getting a very good, a very good grant writing firm. So, that's why I wanted this pulled, because I encourage my colleagues, even though, you know, Millennium has done a good job, that it might be a budget year to prioritize saving money and choosing Bruno.
Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
I didn't want this pulled. I appreciate the conversation. I did too have a concern with respect to, and while I understand and appreciate everyone's working relationship with Millennium, and all of the grants that are listed that they have successfully acquired, which are pretty extensive, at 200, 622,000, over $622,000. Looking at the difference in what's been bid and similarities in the organizations, you know, the additional $15,000 that Millennium is charging, it's a little concerning to me. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
I appreciate the concern. You know, I'm deeply involved with Millennium here on these grants. I happen to live with the chairperson of the Open Space Commission, and just today, he put the finishing touches on an ANJAC grant that they have been working on. We have, we have been awarded, as you can see from the first two pages, we have been awarded, as John said, almost $700,000. I'm looking on page four. There are quite a few more pending grants that were noticed and are coming due in June and July, that we need to designate projects for. I know I had sent out an email to that effect a few weeks ago. I am ready, willing, and able to work on these. Millennium has all of that information. Some of these are transportation grants, and I know that we have submitted hundreds of thousands of dollars in transportation grants. As Jerry has mentioned, they have our maps, they have all of the information that we, and they have our concerns. I'm not ready to move to look at a different contract. I just feel that I've been very satisfied with the work that they have done and the product that they have produced.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and those are all great points and all great conversations. That's why we take our time to discuss things, these items. This is one of those situations where the service, you know, pays for itself if it's done correctly. I'm comfortable, because I've done a lot of grant writing. I also was very involved when I was on the school board side. The amount of time they put in, and it's increased. So, from the beginning of the relationship, I'm not surprised, because the hours, there's more and more hours, and more and more operators on their end that have been involved in, in the grants, because they're, they never just turn us away, too, so. And they also, as one of my colleagues stated earlier, when they have something, they also get our attention. In this COVID crisis, I've seen the level of service rise. They, again, working with our senior service department, when they literally have no time and taking on many of the responsibilities that the township should be doing in regards to getting them information and writing on our end, because we're supposed to be responsible. So, that responsibility has increased over for them. So I think that's why you're seeing this increase. Well, I know that's why you're seeing this increase. Volume has increased, which is more time, and the production side of it, as far as the writing itself, is, is more labor-intensive on their end. That has increased as well. So, I'll be looking forward to, you know, to approving this this evening. So, Council, Councilman, you still want to keep this pulled, and I'll put it in consent?
Yes, please.
Okay, great, great. And then, we have C, so Mr. Gross and Mr. Trank. Mr. Gross, if you want to start off first, you know, we have this great asset of ours that we purchased last spring, Rock Spring Golf Course, and we have Governor not letting us operate it, obviously, for the apparent reason. So, if you could talk a little bit about the situation that we have at hand?
As I think everyone's aware, last year, when we fired the golf, the golf course, we hired Kemper Sports to manage the golf course for us. Obviously, that management was contingent upon us allowing them to play golf on the course, which the Governor has usurped our authority on that. Or, rightfully so, it's prerogative to do that, but he has. So, we were looking for a solution. It's one of the main problems we have, is if the course goes unmaintained for any period of time, we would actually lose the course. The course is maintained by a professional who is licensed to do such work on golf courses, to maintain, because it's quite a science. It's not, it's not something that's easy to do. So, I, Mr. Trank had the initial conversations, I'll let him talk about the terms and conditions of the agreement that you have before you, and then I can talk to you again about, I guess, what our opportunities for mitigation of these costs might be.
Mr. Trank? You need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry, my fault. So, thank you, Mr. Gross, today, Council President. One, you know, in, Mr. Gross and I have been working on this about 10 days, because the, we all understand the issues. So, one of the things that we require that they provide us with was a detailed budget, and what's presented to you tonight is a maximum. It is all, it's all, it's all aimed at, the minute that the course is able to open, within 48 hours, that Kemper will reopen it on whatever social distancing and whatever parameters is permitted by the state. So, as you're aware from last year, and as clearly exists, April and May are the critical months with regard to fertilizer, and as Mr. Gross and as we've been educated, the science of this. So, basically, you have what's the bare bones, to maintain the course in the condition, so that it'll be able to open within 48 hours. We are not going to pay one nickel in advance. It'll all be a reimbursement with paid receipts and backup. And obviously, Mr. Gross will talk to our hope in terms of recouping some of these dollars, but we've come to the conclusion that we literally need to maintain this asset, that we've had all kinds of discussions with Kemper. They were not able to get a PPP loan under the Payment Protection Program. They do not have business interruption insurance that covers this. This does not cover any profit at all to Kemper. And again, so I'll answer any questions, or Mr. Gross can talk to how we hope this recoups. But 200 is the absolute maximum. If all of these expenses go out till June 30th, which obviously, we hope they will not, keep in mind, there's hourly employees, so when it rains, they're not able to be out there. So, it will come in less than this number, and we've obviously had a lot of rain in April, so. So, those, we've talked to various people on these issues.
Okay. Mr. Gross, you had, did you say, mentioned already, it sent us staff reimbursement activities during the closure?
Yeah, I want to assure that, and piggyback on what Richard said, I mean, this is a reimbursement grant, and so, whatever we're being asked to reimburse has to be consistent with the contract and with the actual responsibilities that we want them to perform. Specifically, there's a list in there that we've provided you, which will be attached to the agreement, which outlines the activities for which we would be doing, basically, be doing the reimbursement. Things above and beyond that would not be incurred. And if they, if they tried to bill us for that. You know, that, that's a pretty thorough list, I think. We went through by person by person, just to get a sense, as well as the qualifications of their, their course director. I forget their exact title they have for it.
Superintendent, superintendent.
Superintendent, superintendent. So, we're satisfied that that's the work that's required to be done, and that in order to protect our asset. I think it's a key that, key to talk about this. We want to make sure that the money that we've invested in this, and the success that we've seen in this course, that we're in a position of moving forward to, to continue that on, once we're allowed to open up and get back full force. As far as the funds are concerned, at this point in time, we've not received direction yet from FEMA as to what will be compensable and what won't be compensable. They basically have to rewrite, because nope, we've not seen, you know, I'm gonna state the obvious. No one's ever seen this before, and we've never had emergencies of this nature before. So, what they're willing to, what they're willing to compensate for and what they're not, we don't know as far as FEMA is concerned. I did sit in on a, a meeting today with the organization of cities, National Institute of Cities, and in there, they were talking about the next tranche of aid that's being put together in the, in the, at the Senate and the House at this point in time. Obviously, you probably have heard, one of the big fights is whether, what extent, if at all, they're going to support state, counties, municipalities. And the package that they're looking at, the ones that are on the floor now to be introduced, include monies to cities, counties, and municipalities specifically for lost revenue, which is what this is. This is a lost revenue situation. So, it is somewhat encouraging that at this time, as drafted, there would be an opportunity for us to apply for those funds. So, I do think that ultimately, this, this event as an emergency, for the most part, is going to be a revenue loss emergency. You know, our incremental cost is not, it's not like a, a, a snowstorm, or ice storm, or, or hurricane, where we spend a lot of money in mitigation, that type of mitigation. It's going to be lost revenues, and that's what everybody basically thinks. So, I am optimistic that that will be the focus of FEMA as well, and certainly, if it's the focus of any other legislation that comes out of federal government deposits as well. Having said that, there are no guarantees.
And in the contract, you have language, which I read, that if there's any compensation that they were to get back, they would have to compensate us.
If they do that, yes, absolutely.
Okay. If any of my colleagues have questions, Councilman Greino?
No, thank you, Council President.
Sure. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you. Could I, we get some sort of estimate, your best guess, on when the Governor may allow these types of facilities to reopen?
Pennsylvania opened up today, yesterday. There's mixed reports about whether New York is opening or not. It's starting to happen around us. The bad, the bad news is that we're not, you know, we're not as far along as, as New York is, in terms of the curve. So, I would suspect, and I think the sense we got from his comments, is he's looking to normalize things, start, start to normalize things by Memorial Day, which puts it sometime, you know, maybe mid-May, end of May, maybe, but it's all good. There's, you know, you just don't...
Yeah, I don't follow his daily news conferences, but I just wondered if he had said anything having to do with outdoors, parks, you know, the recreation?
He talked very general today. He did not give any specifics. But the pressure's on. I mean, like I say, the states around us are starting to allow it. So, I think that, you know, once we get over the curve, once we flatten out, part on the downside is probably when that's going to be considered, but then, we just don't.
Okay. I had asked you what the administration's estimate of the chances of getting a reimbursement, and the timeline for that. And I just wanted maybe clarify this. You said 75 to 100% from FEMA. Did you mean that's the total amount that you expect to be able to recoup? Or do you think that's just the chances that FEMA will give us at least a dollar?
That, that's the criteria, that's the criteria that FEMA, if FEMA pays, they will pay at least 75%, and there has been a request for them to pay, and there have been times when they've paid as much as 100%. So, that's just their, formulaically, that's their history. But I think what I just said previously pretty much answers your question in terms of what to, I mean, what the possibilities are. And timing is, you know, it was just last year, yeah, last year, I think, beginning of last year or the end of the previous year, when we got the last bunch of money for Sandy. So, the money will come when the money comes. It's not usually quick.
Right, that's what I, that's what I wanted to ask you about, because I know we had expected to get a lot more reimbursement than the last I recall, we weren't getting from FEMA for Sandy. But I didn't even realize we got money last year. Can you talk a little bit about... Can you talk a little bit about what our experience was with Sandy and FEMA reimbursement?
We actually, we actually got pretty much everything. The only thing we didn't get was the, some of the recycling money that we didn't pay that was on behalf of another entity. Ultimately, we ended up getting pretty much everything we applied for.
Okay.
That's 75%, that's 75%.
Right, okay, okay.
It took a long time. And you're right, for a long time, we thought we weren't going to get very much at all. But we ended up, we were persistent and we, we, we ended up, you know, getting what we were supposed to get.
And then, okay, thank you. And then you also said that may be available from the federal feds over the la, next 60 to 90 days. One of my major concerns on this reimbursement issue is that every state, county, municipality in the country is going to be asking for this money. And we've, we've already, I don't even know how much money, if you include the, the financing plans, maybe we've committed five, maybe four or five trillion dollars to this. So, I'm not sure how much more money is out there. Does that give you any pause?
I've been, I've been in pause for about six weeks. So, you know, everything gives me pause these days. But, you know, I can only tell you what we know historically and, 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 look, we all know one thing. This is, as, as we say in the, in the front of the building, we're all in this. And that means everybody. And everybody's got, got the same problem. And, 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 you know, we have to have faith and persistence in dealing with those that are going to make the decision to, to keep them focused on the, the real issue here. And the real issue for everybody is lack of revenue. So, yes, I have pause, I have agita. I've got every emotion you can think about this. But we, 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 we have the things that we have to do. And we have asked it to protect. And if we don't do this, you know, in, in, if, if we go on and the next two months and we don't take care of this property, make sure that it is properly maintained, we're going to, we're going to have a, a, we're not going to have a golf course anymore. Or it's going to cost us millions of dollars to fix it. So, it, it really is, to me, this is the best, worst case scenario.
Okay. You had, you had also said that, that the maximum of $200,000 is projected to cover up to the next three months of?
April, May, June.
Right. That's obviously a, a big cut from what was budgeted in terms of the expenses over that time period. I mean, it's just much lower. But I wanted to get some idea of what is it that is in the budget, the original budget, that's not going to be spent now while there's the lockdown? Just some of the major items because?
Well, you have 13 to 15 people. So, you're talking four versus, you got, you got nine, nine to 11, 12 people that more that would normally be on that course working, they're not going to be working. That's your big nut right there. You know, it's, it's fine.
Okay. And are there, are there any layoffs then? Are there any layoffs of the people that are working there now?
Yes, they, they, yes, they furloughed. They, everyone except these four individuals has been furloughed. You know, basically, as you can appreciate, when they get into the busier season, they hire up. But they have definitely cut the staff to the bare minimum because Mr. Gross made it very clear, we're not paying anything but essential to maintain the course.
Yeah, I don't know how many of them were furloughed. Frankly, they were just gearing up when this hit because they may not have yet hired everybody as well. So, that's, that's a part, or didn't, didn't have them come back. It probably has, you know, they have people that they hire for the summer and they probably didn't bring them back because, you know, hitting into this.
So, I just, I just want to be clear. Have there been furloughs? Or is it, is it more so that the budget is going to be accommodated by not hiring people?
Again, I, we can find out the answer to that, but I believe that on a typical, we'll call it April or May, if, if this, if we were in the middle of COVID-19, clearly, they have more than four people who work there on a daily, weekly basis. So, I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Gross is right that they were staffing up. Because of course, the natural question I asked, Councilman, was if you get the green light hypothetically on May 15th, how are you going to be ready to open on May 17? They said, there's enough college students and other people and, and people who worked within the past, that they know if they call them, they'll come back in a hurry. Or they will get people from their other, they, they'll have the people, that's theirs. But I, I can't tell you exactly what they had. They certainly didn't have the, the 30 to 40 people they have in peak season. But I do believe they had more than four people there before March 21st, when they had to shut down.
Yeah, I think that's true. If you look at the actuals versus budget for this year, we've been, the facility had generated quite a bit of income in the first part of the year.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering if they provided, provided a list. One of the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, 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 I respect how you're looking at it. Obviously, Mr. Gross is always trying to minimize the potential expense. So, he looked at it from the opposite, saying, what is the essential minimum we need to, you know, maintain the course?
Yeah, and you, you knowing me, know that that's what I'm looking at as well.
Oh, excuse me, Councilman, I, I just want to add to that if you don't mind. You know, don't forget also, the, they also had events booked that they, they had to cancel and furlough people, you know, with their waitstaff. So, you know, going into our second year with them, they had, you know, you know, numerous events already planned already that obviously, you know, can't, especially April, May, they had like showers, graduation parties, and, and all that. So, they had a, they definitely had a furlough, furlough people. Mr. Gross will have to get the answer for you. But there, there was definitely other staff, you know, that were going to be working on site. Go ahead.
One of my, one of my other major concerns is that, is that the way that the town and the vendor split the revenues in terms of compensation, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what, what Kemper is and is not going to be compensated for during this period going forward under this, this revision. And I saw an email, I think it was an email from somebody from Kemper, who said that, that Kemper was not going to, to take any of the management fee that it would otherwise do if there were revenues, because that's what the fee is, is based on. But it wasn't clear to me if that provision was in any sort of legal agreement so that they are legally obligated not to take the management fee. And I believe also not to take this, I don't know what you call it, the loan payback or the, the, the fronting of expenses at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the golf course from this money.
If, if there's no revenues, there's no fees. I mean, it's strict, you know, because they're, first off, we're the, we, we get the, we get a cut off the top. So, we're getting nothing because there's no revenue. They don't get any revenue in the backend unless there's a prop. So, they're not getting anything. So, this is, this is the only money that's going to be going into this course until it reopen.
Right. So, so just to clarify, for my, my clarification, there's no management fee being used for this money, obviously not for the town and certainly not for Kemper. And then there's also this, this loan repayment that they also have a priority to. And I just want to make sure that that's also not going to be used for more of these funds.
Correct, that's correct. Not, there is not, the money that this money is going to be used for isn't the detailed sheets that, that you have. You know, everything from fertilizer to chemicals, to gas, to wetting agents, to irrigation, to sand, to, you know, four employees, pest controls, security. It is the essential aspects needed to maintain the course.
Okay. Do you feel like that needs to be explicitly written in the agreement?
No.
Or would you guys just not pay it?
No, but you don't, it's a reimbursement. And paragraph one says that we're funding operating expenses as set forth on Exhibit A up to an aggregate amount. And it says that they have to, we'll provide the funding. They give us a request every two weeks with appropriate documentation to document the operating expense along with appropriate receipts, invoices, and other documentation. So, there is nothing they could submit, it's hard enough to get a reimbursement from Mr. Gross for anything. There's nothing they could submit that's outside the four corners of this. You're welcome. That's why, that's why you're, that will ever be considered.
Okay. I also wondered if you guys have done any sort of what ifs on what happens at the end of three months if we're, if we're not able to reopen?
It's an excellent question. And the, the short answer is no, because?
I would say we've contemplated it, but we don't have any conclusions.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's a, it's a major issue. If, God forbid, the course, you have two issues there, really. One is, God forbid, we're still where we are now and you can't open the course on June 30th. The other point is the more likely one. The more likely one, and this is why we need to work with them and, and be monitoring it, the more likelihood is they're going to open and open obviously with social distancing and therefore, the revenue and use is going to be different than you even saw at the beginning of this year. This course has been tremendously successful and it's not going to be able to have the same capacity that it had even earlier this year. So, I think we need to take it in steps. Obviously, when they get open, the funding stops on our end. And obviously, for the near future, it's going to be a different operation so that people can stay safe and healthy. And, and, you know, let's get through this and then we're going to have to sit back.
And just one more question. They're, they've, they've got four people listed in the papers that they want to employ going forward. They, they appear to be some of the highest paid employees that they would have. Is, is that satisfactory to you? Do you think they could get this job with, with, at a lower labor cost?
So, so excellent question, but Mr. Gross was all over that from Jump Street. Obviously, Council President, that was her first call on Thursday. And Councilwoman Metu Brown has spent a, a bunch of time along on the phone with our contract compliance, Mr. Kronheim. And I know Councilwoman McCartney also reached out to me. So, net-net, Mr. Ramage, who is the Golf Course Superintendent, is licensed by the DEP. He, and, and I even spoke to Mr. Al Greeno because I consider him to be incredibly knowledgeable on all this stuff. He said, you know, we can't, we can't pick up the phone and just start calling people because you put the wrong, it's a science. And as was explained to Mr. Gross and I in more conference calls than I want to remember, was you put the wrong amount of chemicals on this course, too much, too little, it burns out. So, Mr. Ramage is a critical person and he is the Golf Course Superintendent and he's made the course like it is now. Mr. Parker has been here since Jump Street. He is the manager of the facility. He does much more than just supervise. He gets on the mower. They're, they're, they're all working at cross purposes to make sure this work is done. So, while Mr. Parker and Mr. Ramage are obviously as the supervisors and the scientists, the higher paid end, they're essential to the supervision and management, not just of the course. But again, keep in mind, they're maintaining the buildings. You know, we had problems from some flooding issues in the beginning, some alarm issues to secure this property. The other two people are just the hourly people who, who run the mower, mowers on an hourly basis. So, we don't believe there's any other way, especially in an emergency situation, that we could go out and get someone with the knowledge, the hands-on experience of Mr. Parker and Mr. Ramage to, you know, fill in those spots. Obviously, if we're sitting here on June 29th and the course isn't opening, obviously, we're going to have to revisit all of this. But right now, this is where we're at.
Excuse me, Councilman, I, I just want to add to that. And, and Mr. Trank, I, I, just a slight correction. Mr. Parker feels like he's been here since Jump Street. But actually, he, he came on actually a month or two after we had purchased the course. And there was a lot of issues in the beginning with the management. And they took him from another location down in North Carolina. And he has been a game changer since he came and took over that course. So, he, he's, he's instrumental in the, in the operations there.
There was the mention of Mr. Kronheim, who's a, I believe he's the town's consultant on the course. Is he going to be, continue to be paid from these funds?
I believe he is definitely one of the why items because he visits the course regularly and his rate is part of, is paid by the vendor. So, it's part of this amount. I believe it's, it's a thousand dollars a month, give or take. It's a limited amount.
Thank you. Council President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Metu Brown?
Yes, I am on mute. Thank you. Um, I, as Mr. Trank pointed out, mentioned that both Council President Catalina and myself have spent quite some time going through this. And I, I think it's fair to say that all of my council colleagues have had the same reaction, shared the same reaction that I have shared initially. Be very incredibly reluctant in this time to look at this. And initially, what stood out to me was $200,000 for Kemper, which is really not for Kemper, but for an asset of ours. Councilwoman Kukrovjak asked all of the questions that I had listed, you know, with respect to contingency plans and the salaries that are being paid. You know, the number of employees that are there, why does General Management have to be there with respect to Chris Parker and Brandon? And shortly after several conversations that, that I had, and then I spoke to actual, to our compliance officer, who explained what their responsibilities are, if you will. So, Chris Parker, our manager, obviously oversees the grounds of the club and all of the, you know, vendor relations and things that have to happen while the golf course is, in essence, still on lockdown. But in, in preparedness mode for when the governor decides to lift the, the quarantine. Including in all that is getting on a lawn mower, cleaning fairways, aeration of greens. This, the example of the activities that the four employees that are being kept on, they're, they're all very hands-on. And it is an extensive piece of property to maintain for four people. How they're going to manage that is, it's, I'm sure it's going to be quite time-consuming and a tremendous job for them to have to do. I too had the same concerns as to what it is that we're paying for. Mr. Gross did point out when he and I had the conversation that the resolution specifically calls out for reimbursables of every two weeks, they are to provide invoices to document what maintenance expenses that they've had to pay. And that's all he was going to reimburse for. Looking at that, and then we all asked for the financials as well that we, that, that were shared with us. And looking at the 2019 results of, of what Kemper was able to do, opening late as they did, looking at their net income for the first three months of operation is really minimal. Starting off, I mean, ending off the year strong and then starting off this year with now one month and possibly almost two, because April is already lost. And if May, if May is not ready to be operable, then that's a second month loss. And then what are you left with? June, possibly July. I, I am not happy about this at all, considering that we're all in situations and some of us are there. us are there already, some of us may unfortunately have to be there at some time. And, you know, our first response is, who's going to help us? Right? But I also understand that this is a revenue generator for our town. This is our property. And I think, not I think, I believe it is a responsibility that we have to maintain it in operable, ready operable condition so that when the governor lifts this quarantine, that we'll be ready to go. And I made several phone calls to, you know, different legislatures to kind of get a feel as to, you know, to Councilor Kukoviac's point, you know, is there an estimate of when the governor will be? I do follow the governor's updates daily, and I did hear him say yesterday with respect to the Memorial Day date, a newspaper reporter asked him whether or not we would be open by then, and he sounded optimistic. Obviously, it's not a guarantee, but I'm sure looking to other partners in neighboring states and following some lead in that regard. I don't feel that because we are in this situation today, we will be in this situation. You know, hopefully not for the next three months, but I do feel that because it is only reimbursable for every two weeks of documented expenses, that we have a responsibility to maintain property. And again, I don't want, I don't want the narrative to be, you know, oh, they're giving Kemper $200,000. That's not it. It is a reimbursement of expenses to maintain a property township owns. And I think that after having all of the conversations that I've had and looking at what's happening nationally, when the governor lifts this, there's not going to be very many other places to go but a golf course for all those golfers who are looking to get out of the house. While this is a hard pill to swallow, and it was a very difficult decision to come to, I think it'd be negligent if we didn't take care of that asset that we mentioned. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Well, thank you, Council President. I came to the same conclusion as my colleague, seeing the total aggregate amount of $200,000. We're very reluctant at first, asking the same questions that we've all asked. I appreciate Mr. Gross talking about the appropriate documentation that will be needed to account for all their operating expenses. I also appreciated seeing the financial statements so that we know what it is that we are paying for coming out of this maximum amount. Very reluctant, but I do understand that we do have to protect our asset. And we know how popular it is as soon as it is open, as was stated before. I don't think we'll have anything of a slow start that we had last year around this time because it is, it has become so popular. And it looks right now absolutely beautiful, so they have been maintaining it, and that needs to continue.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And yeah, I want to duplicate a lot of my colleagues' remarks. Being married to an avid golfer, I know he's ready to call the governor to protest opening for play. Golf as, all the courts, they made it, you know, it's safe for social distancing. It is by nature. You don't have to drive with your friends to the golf course. You can meet your friend there. You could walk with a cart. And I know they fixed it with the flags that you don't, you know, that the ball doesn't even go in the hole, so you don't have to lift it out of the cup. So they have already made adjustments to the game. It will slow down play a little bit, they predict, but it is doable and it will be extremely busy, especially with so many people still maybe working from home. So hopefully we'll be optimistic. I don't see the course going later than the Memorial Day. I'm hoping the governor considers for May 15th because it is one of those recreational activities that can be played with the social distancing. But I appreciate all the time that Mr. Gross and Mr. Trank has spent on this. This was tough. You know, my colleagues are being kind. I think we all kind of freaked out when we called them. Because this is a lot. This is a lot. But again, it is an asset and that we are responsible for, and we do need a quick opening. So as soon as the word is given, we need, we do need to get this open within 48 hours, and this gives us that option to do that. So thank you for all your hard work and negotiations. I kind of went out of order a little bit. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to go ahead. We have two items pulled, A and C. We have a discussion. I didn't have a vote yet, so I think we'll just work backwards. And Madam Clerk, if you want to call the vote for item C that we're talking about now.
Council President?
Yes, Council, Councilman.
I'm sorry, I just came up with another question on this issue, and I think it's major, or otherwise I wouldn't talk about it.
Sure.
I just wanted to ask the administration, is this sort of contingency contemplated in the contract that we have with them in terms of, is there, I don't remember this, that there's a, whether there's a provision that says if the course is shut down, we'll give you additional funds? What would be the, what would be the responsibility of the vendor if we did not give them this $200,000?
Again, I'll take that one because obviously we have, obviously, we have examined that issue. And the bottom line is, to go back to what has been said a number of times tonight by the two chiefs and whatnot and by Mr. Gross, this is unprecedented. Having said that, clearly, the very nature of the agreement was that they would operate the course for us. We own the course, we own the building, and for instance, like with regard to the building, we have very specific provisions that if the roof goes or any capital system, it's the township's responsibility. Because in honesty, as you know, we gave them a two-year operating agreement with three one-year options after that. So the bottom line is, the analysis that we did of the agreement was, and this is the hypothetical that I used with the Council President as she asked the questions, if you rent me your shore house and the governor says, I can't come to your shore house, you're not entitled to the money and you're not, there's a failure of consideration. And again, these are unprecedented issues. We can spend all the time we want to try to go make court hearings and precedents, but at the end of the day, the analysis is simple. We entered into an agreement with Kemper after we did an RFP process, and that was for them to operate the course. They are not able to operate the course, period. There's not even a gray area here. That would violate the law for Kemper or for West Orange to operate this course. So therefore, basically, we are mothballing our asset. And the key to do when you mothball anything is to make sure, as I think several of the council people have said, that it's ready to come out of mothballs as quickly as humanly possible. So that is the analysis of the Law Department, that there would be no ability for us to force Kemper to, you know, absorb these expenses and stay there without any ability to do what they contracted to do, and that is operate the course.
I have a question, Mr. Trank, Council President. I have a question for the Law Department. Mr. Trank, under a contract, and basically we've asked them to run our golf course, do they have any recourse under adverse actions or force majeure?
Well, force majeure is obviously, you're right, the Latin term, that is exactly what I'm articulating, that because of an act of God or because they're not able, the parties aren't able to effectuate the purpose of the contract, they could walk away. But of course, if they walk away, we'd be right where we are today, and that would be, how do we maintain this course? And then what do we do, knock on wood, as soon as possible, when we can take it out of mothballs? So the short answer is, you're right, Councilman Greeno, it is in essence a force majeure, but a force majeure, and that term is usually used as a pause. And that's where we're at. The problem is, this is like having a horse. You got to feed it every day or the horse dies. And that's why it's not enough to say to Kemper, go home to Chicago or wherever and come back whenever the governor says you come back because there won't be anyone to come back to.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
By the way, I did get an answer, Mr. Parker, to his credit, is obviously listening as, I guess, to meetings. And he did text me that a total of 19 seasonal employees who were active on the payroll before they had to close were furloughed. So that does answer the question that, and does get to your point, we brought it down to the bare minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. All right, so item, so Madam Clerk, I'll let you conduct me. What would you like to do first?
I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is implemented. We have resolution 10420, resolution authorizing the township to enter into an agreement with Millennium Strategies for Grant Writing Services for 2020 in the amount of $3,300 per month commencing on May 1st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve 104-20?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay, and resolution 106-20, resolution authorizing the township to enter into a First Amendment to Qualified Management and Maintenance Contract with Kemper Sports Management, Inc., whereby up to $200,000 shall be provided to reimburse Kemper for maintaining Rock Spring during the emergency cessation of operations. Is there a motion to approve 106-20?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay, now we have ordinances on second and final reading, 2602-20, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, subsection 7-32.1, Handicap Parking on Streets, and subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Councilman, wait, I have to do the roll call. Councilwoman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, at this point in time, if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on ordinance 2602-20, please let the moderator know.
I'm going to give it just a couple of seconds because there is sometimes a little bit of lag with the attendees.
Okay, sure. You give me the signal.
No problem. If anyone's using a phone, they can use the star nine feature as well. And we have none.
Okay. Open up to my colleagues, any discussion on this ordinance, handicap parking on streets, restricted parking zones?
No, Benny was on our call last time and we had asked him questions.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2602-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2603-20, and ordinance amending Chapter 25, Sections 3.2 and 26.13 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Zone Map and Conservation District. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. At this point in time, is there any member of the public who would like to speak on ordinance 2603-20? Please let the moderator know.
Okay, I have no one raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. My colleagues, any discussion? We had had discussion last time about this ordinance.
You wanted me to recap? I have a split screen. I can recap that what we're doing is taking a few lots out of a conservation overlay district that are zoned R2, which are large lots. We're changing that to an R5 zone, which would be more compliant with the area, and that would make it easier for residents in that area to modify their home if they wanted to in some way. There are still quite a few lots. If you look at the end of the ordinance and Schedule 1, there are still lots that would remain in the conservation district, potential public parks, public recreation areas, and they're listed.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
If I could just ask you a couple of questions?
Oh, sure.
I didn't, I'm not really clear on this. Is the conservation district as an overlay, it's over privately owned property now?
Yes.
Some, and some are township.
Okay. Do you know what the split is? I know this is in the master plan update, but I don't know a whole lot about this. Do you know why?
I was just happy to be able to split my screen so that I can read them both. Since we don't have all the printed documents, I don't have my master plan in front of me. And I don't know that that would be listed as, I guess it would be on the open space map on what is township owned.
This is not open space land.
This is not, I didn't mean open space. I meant on the Rossi of undeveloped.
And Councilman, what happened here was there's, it's not only private pop, there's a built home in that section, and that is, that is an error that shouldn't have happened when the overlay was presented. A built home never should have been put in that area.
Okay, because it's like, I think it's eight different lots, if I recall correctly?
There are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 10.
So obviously, somewhere along the line, we thought that it was important to put all these properties in a conservation district, obviously to protect the environment. What I'm trying to find out is what has changed about this? I mean, do we still need to be protecting through a conservation district overlay?
We still are on 3, 6, 9, 12, 18, 21 other lots. We still are in that area.
Yeah. One of the residents had asked me a question about the acreage. So we're pulling out about two and a half acres, and there's well over 20 acres of lots left that are still in the zone, that are still in the zone.
Okay. Here would be my question, if, I didn't realize that there was a home that's already built on one of these properties. So I can understand if you have a house that's there and they want to do something to add on to the house or expand it or whatever, I can understand maybe, you know, one or two of the lots. But I don't understand why we're basically selling off 10 of the lots. Why that there's 10?
Well, we're not selling anything. Some properties are, most of the properties are, we own. Some properties are, most of the properties are we own, so we don't have to sell anything, but there's some pieces that there's adjacent property, I was on the phone, Mr. Greigle this morning, asking him this. There's one lot that has, that's owned, that they want to buy a piece of a lot to make their property bigger. And then there's another, the house has, wants to buy one of our lots to expand their existing home, but not build on the new lot, but to bring it out to the, to the property line. So there's room there that potentially, if we want to sell any other of our lots that the town owns, there could be spot housing in regards like a home here or a home there, if the township wants to sell that.
Okay, but.
And then other lots are in the steep slope, are steep slope, they're not even buildable. So some of these lots aren't even buildable.
No.
But they fall in the block.
Brent Street.
Okay, I, I obviously don't know enough about this, this ordinance, so let's just move on. I'm, I apologize for not doing my research.
That's okay. Does any, any of my other colleagues have a question or a comment in regards to this?
The planning board did also approve this and make a recommendation to the council.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2603-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Grino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay, there are no ordinances on first reading, pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
So I just quickly want to ask Mr. Gross, probably, the answer's going to be, you don't have the information, but again, just in regards to budget planning, I know you tapped onto it earlier, but it doesn't sound like there's any, any kind of planning we could do right now, correct?
Well, I mean, the next move is, you know, obviously, is to schedule the budget hearing based on what was submitted. Having said that, I think that's kind of pointless till we see what happens with.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, can you speak up a little bit? I'm having trouble hearing you. I'm not sure if anybody else is.
Yeah, I think it'd be pointless to move forward with a budget hearing at this point in time before we see what happens over the next six weeks. You know, as I, as I mentioned before, to the extent this is going to be a financial crisis for us, it's going to be a revenue crisis. So the governor, we took the resolution off tonight, amending the, the rate for delinquent taxes, because the governor pushed back the due date a month, which we're thankful for that, because there, there were a lot of complications with, with, with changing the, the interest rate, which we don't, now we don't need to go into tonight. Hopefully, in a month, we won't have to go into it then either, but we'll see. But, you know, we'll know better how, you know, if people are paying their taxes and, and where we are on revenue. I just say this, to the extent that we're going to have a revenue problem, it's going to be in the third quarter, not necessarily this quarter. So we may do well right now, but we're going to, we're going to have to be careful looking forward into the, to the August payments, because that's where people are not going to have money if they're not going to have. So we've got, we've got a rocky three or four months ahead of us.
Yeah.
Council President?
Yes.
I could just ask, since Mr. Gross has here and he mentioned the executive order that was signed today by our governor with respect to pushing back the deadline for the taxes, can you just discuss in brief terms what the municipality's responsibility to that is? Is it optional for municipalities? And I've heard different discussions surrounding that. So just to clarify for our residents and those who are watching, what in essence does that represent, signify? And that's the first question. And then freezing taxes, what does that, what, what kind of impact, can just briefly discuss, what kind of impact does that have for our municipality?
Okay. In, in terms of the governor's order today, the governor did something that we could not do. We were not, we were not allowed to push back the date for a month. So we contemplated, and it was on your, on your, excuse me for.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, I, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you again.
I'm sorry. We had a resolution off your consideration tonight, something that the council could, could have done, which was reduce the interest rate from 8 and 18% down to whatever, we were contemplating at or near zero. So, so right now, you know, there's really nothing for the municipality to do, because the governor has extended the date that the, that the second quarter is due and from June 1st payable by June 10th. So before, before that occurs, we may or may not have another conversation about it. But at this point in time, there's really nothing else handled that will impact anything over the next month. In getting to your, your issue of freezing taxes, taxes are, you know, it's revenues and expenses. If, whatever we do to, to deal with the, the expenses that we have and the revenues that we have will directly impact tax. So, you know, off the top of my head, if we, if we were to freeze at this point in time at last year's tax rate, we're looking at layoffs and furlows and all things that come with it. And I'm not saying that because I'm trying to talk you out of it, that's just a fact of the matter, and that, that's obviously something that we're going to be, and are kicking around as to what, what this all means to us. We just don't know the answer. We don't know, we don't know how bad it's going to be. I mean, it could get so bad that there would be very little we could do, and, and I think, you know, we, we, we want to make sure that we don't get into that situation, and that, that's where we're talking to our legislators about aid and things of that nature, to ensure that it never gets that bad. But just, just to give you some perspective, if, we, we collect around $230 million in tax revenue for all, for all the taxing agencies, and about three quarters of that comes from mortgage companies. So you're basically talking about 170, 170, 170 million of that 240, 170 to 180 million of that 240 coming from mortgage company, mortgage and banks. That means the rest of it's coming from taxpayers. So if you're talking maybe $60 million on a year, so on a quarter, that's 15 million. If people can't afford to pay their taxes, that's, that's an $8 million deficit just right there. And, you know, $8 million is 10% of your budget, you know, it's, it's 25% of your staff. So it's, potential here is, could be devastating.
I appreciate the response. I know that I've had some, and, and I've inquired about that too, but as of late, I have had some residents reach out and, and ask what that, what that would be, if we could, I just wanted you to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Does anyone else have any questions or another pending matter for the administration this evening?
Yes, please, I'd like to follow up with Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross, given all the uncertainty, do you think it would be prudent to, the golf course funding aside, to try to cut back on expenses at this point?
We have.
And are we doing? What have we done?
Yeah.
That's great news. What, what have we done to, to reduce expenditures?
Well, the biggest thing is, is our operation is so trimmed that, that we own, that, that normal everyday expenditures, a lot of them we don't have, have not had to do, because we're just not, we're not performing all the services that we normally provide. So it's not millions of dollars, but it is, it is, it is important that we do that. In terms of staffing, we're certainly not putting on new staff, we're minimizing, you know, our, our overtime, we, our overtime is way down in the police department because of the staffing shifts that we've made, same thing with DTW, so we've made those changes as well. So we've, we've taken some actions already to save significant amounts, significant amounts of money. We're also learning more about how to do things, you know, the way, way we're doing things, that we may learn something from moving forward about future ways to save money. Having said that.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you again.
I'll just keep leaning in.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta, that's what I, that's what I do with my computer, as I, you can see my big face in here, I've been leaning in. Go ahead, sorry.
No, it's just, we're, you know, there's a lot to, a lot to, to look at over the next six weeks, and we're, we're dealing with it every day, and looking wherever we can to mitigate costs and mitigate the potential losses.
Mr. Gross, thank you. Can you ballpark what a monthly run rate is on the, the expenditure reductions going forward?
No, I can't at this point. I, you know, we're, we're, we're working with, with, with not the same resources as if we were in the office. I don't necessarily have the ability to do that right now, but it's certainly something that will, certainly over the next six weeks. By the time we have a serious conversation about where we can go, that will all be done.
Okay. I know last year when we were talking about an eight and a half percent municipal property tax rate, you said that felt pretty confident you could do this year's budget with a 2% increase. Do you still feel that way?
Oh, I think we can do this year's budget with a 2% increase. I don't think that's going to be the issue, except for, to the extent that if we have reductions in revenues, all bets are off.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Obviously, we're not having a street fair, I'm sure 4th of July has to be questionable at this, at this point. Opening of the pool, so as sad as it is not to have all those events, the cost savings have, has to, I guess, help you in this situation?
It's certainly helpful. I mean, you know, you're, you're talking, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars probably, and that's, you know, that's what we spent tonight, but, but, you know, that's not to sneeze at. But that's not, the question, the question also remains is, how big of a problem? Are we going to have a $200,000 problem, or are we going to have a $2 million problem? Or more? If I may, oh, I'm sorry, if I may add, Council President, without having the street fair, that the downtown alliances revenues are dropped by 15, $20,000. So, and the budget is built upon the street fair too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else from my colleagues? Okay, well, we.
Council, Council President, I have one question for Mr. Gross.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Gross, talking about, you know, we look about expenditures and reductions, what about our capital programs? What is the status of the ability to follow through on our capital expenditures? We're, we're doing some of it now, we're still continuing whatever, some projects that we can now. We have not finalized a capital budget for this year, because we haven't finalized a lot of them, you know, this throws a, this throws a monkey wrench into the whole process. So I don't have an answer for you now, but in terms of, we are moving on our existing capital projects wherever, to the best of our ability that we can. You know, they are allowed, they were not precluded to continue, so we're continuing with them. Right. Are, are you repositioning the, the priorities of the capital projects predominantly to make sure we focus on the projects that benefit our town employees, particularly our police and fire, particularly roofing and bathroom renovations?
Not important right now.
I mean, my, our, our funds, our funds are dedicated based on the ordinances that are in there. So, you know, they have to be, funds have to be used for the purposes for which they were, were promulgated, and so we can't, we can't reallocate them to other uses. Having said that, we are moving forward with those projects, you know, because they were approved by the council, and those projects, we are moving forward with them. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Okay, Madam Clerk, I see we do not have a ABC hearing this evening?
Correct.
Okay, before we adjourn, I ask for a motion for adjournment. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 12, 6:30. Instructions will be posted the Friday before, westorange.org. So we thank all of you who have been listening in this evening. I still see there's some participants still out there. We appreciate, appreciate you hanging in there with us for the past couple hours. We hope we provided some very needed information to you. This will be uploaded, so if you know anyone out there has not seen the presentation to TV 36 and 45, and we, we, all our prayers go out to everyone, please stay safe, please stay informed. And again, we're still hearts and thoughts going out to all the families affected by this pandemic. To my colleagues, it was nice seeing you this evening.
Same here.
And, and administration, thank you for all your hard work and working so hard. I, I know this has been not only very emotional on all of you, and we, we appreciate all your efforts. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion to leave the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and stay safe, West Orange.
Good night, everybody.
And thank you, Lauren.
No problem. No problem at all. Just to remind you, this will end the meeting for everyone, attendees and panelists, and you will not be able to speak to each other through this medium. Thank you very much, have a great night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good night.